Be polite.
We will like, I'd like to start the meeting. I'm Mayor Pro-Tam Arlen Chamberlain and we'll go ahead and start a work meeting with liaison reports. I'll report that the planning commission didn't meet last week, so we don't, I don't have anything from there. We'll go to J D.
Um, there's a lot going on with the, uh, rec department right now. We met today to, to look for, as far as the, the rec center, we met today to, to try to get an engineer appointed. And I think we've done that, so that's moving forward. Um, I'd like to report that King County Sheriff's Office is gonna be doing a service project at the baseball fields. Get those ready for the heat stroker. And so I'll be reaching out to staff for some, maybe some products and stuff like that. So anyways, but we're gonna do that probably a week or so before the heat stroker on June second and third, is that right? Or is it third and fourth? Something, something around there. Second, third. So we'll help them out. I, I talked to Donnie. He's down a guy, so we'll help him get the weeds pulled and get them edged and get them watered and dried. We got some high schoolers coming to rebuild those mounds and the battery boxes with new clay and all donated for the good cost of the, the kids. So we're excited about that. And, um, I think our next rec meeting is on the June twenty-third or something like that. So that's all I have.
Kerry?
Nothing new from the heritage board since last time. They're about ready to, to open back up. Still doing some, some work in there, but Emily, uh, we had an arts board meeting last Thursday and they did request side, to use the sidewalks for the, uh, chalking it up event for this year's Red Rocktober Fest. So they did bring that up, wanted me to bring it up in the meeting about using, getting approval to use the sidewalks again. So, and then we have a library, uh, meeting on Thursday. So it got, it was supposed to be last week, but it'll be this Thursday.
Um, police and fire, uh, everything's going good. They're busy, really, really busy. Um, just talking to the fire chief. Um, we've been doing a lot of transports and so the volunteers are staying in town and keeping things going in town because the full timer been on two or three transports a day. So busy, busy, uh, with the police. We'll have this city give us an update here in a second on the remodel. So, yeah.
I have been a very good liaison lately, Jake. Is there anything you wanna bring up?
No, the only thing I think was possible, the middle of next week, we'll probably shut down the intersection there to start on the storm drain for the cap center. So there may be a little bit of impeding in the traffic, probably get that intersection dug up. Hopefully we get it by next two days and start on that.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. Uh, what about, uh?
Yeah, with, with, with staff, we wanted to give just an update on the remodel that's taking place within our new police facility. Uh, and so this is a picture I took actually today. They, we have really, I just, I wanna give a shout out to the staff who's, who's doing this work. Uh, it's been really a, a unique project where we have, uh, police officers with the staff from parks and public works, uh, coming together and, and each sending a staff member to come and do this project. Uh, they were really able to quickly take down a, a couple of the walls that they needed. And then, uh, this is, they framed up, uh, two of the offices. One's gonna be for the, the chief and then the other's gonna be a soft interview space up there. Uh, but really just have been so impressed with the staff and, and switching and doing something a little different than what they're normally used to doing. Uh, it's fun to see some, some of the, the police officers working with the, uh, like I said, parks and public works to get this done. Uh, but really it's been a fantastic project. But actually Tom might be able to come up and just give a quick update too on, I don't know if there's anything else on, on, on that project where we're, we're hoping, I think, early July, uh, to be moving in to that facility. Timeline's moving up. Um, construction timelines move the other way, Tom. Uh, August, September. No, we, we, we anticipate, uh, July to be moving into that facility and have it all done and, and ready to go.
We have been ordering some of the things we need for in there. Start to show up. I'm storing that in the bay at our old facility and, but it's moving on. We have storage container now there outside. Jake was kind of finding that for us. If he already owned it, he would have done it for us. Anyway, I appreciate all the help the rest of the city employees are giving us and shout out to, uh, Corporal Raditz and Sergeant Coleman. They put a lot of effort into it and they're dedicating a couple days a week to the project, so.
Great, thanks. Are we?
We're through with the liaison reports. We're just getting through, going through the staff.
Okay, great.
I don't know if they have any more.
Any more, uh, anything else, Dave?
We're good otherwise.
Okay, awesome. Well, uh, I'm late, so I didn't ask anybody to, I'll, I'll offer the prayer. Um, you wanna lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Our Father in heaven, we are grateful for this day and for the opportunity that we have to, we gather together here. Please bless us that we will be able to be led by thee in the decisions that we make, that we will make decisions that are best for the community as a whole. We're grateful for the wonderful place that we live in and the great community that we live in. We thank thee for all of our many blessings and we say these things in the name of thy son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. If you'll arise and follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for taking over, Arlen. Appreciate it. Sorry I'm late. Uh, I'd like to call to order the Canav City Council meeting of May ninth, twenty twenty-three, located in the Canav City Council chambers at twenty-six North, one hundred East. Council members in attendance are Arlen Chamberlain, Kerry Glover, Scott Colson, Chris Eaton and J D Wright, uh, City Manager Kyler Ludwig, City Attorney Kent Burgraff, Treasurer Daniel Ramsey and Land Use Coordinator and Building Inspector, uh, Janay Chatterley are also in attendance. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the April twenty-fifth, that's right, isn't it? April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, city council meeting minutes. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I had one correction on that that I forgot to bring up with anybody and it was on page two in the last paragraph. It says Iron Rock would take care of some kind of a thing. It should be developer would take care of that.
Okay.
Cause Iron Rock wouldn't be doing it. They were just reporting on it, so.
Okay, that's it then?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of, uh, where do they go? April twenty-fifth?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. Next is approval of the accounts payable and check registers. Uh, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the accounts payable, check register for May ninth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of two hundred and thirty dollars, nine hundred and fifty, two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-two cents.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the accounts payable and check registers have been approved. We will now go into public comment period. If you'd like to make a public comment, I ask that you be recognized by myself. Go to the podium and state your name and hold your comments to three minutes as well as follow the rules of civility outlined in Canav Ordinance three dash six oh one. Are there any members of the public who'd like to make a comment at this time? Yeah, Celeste, thanks.
Thank you, Celeste Myers. Good to be here. Um, one thing is I wanted to express appreciation for the resolution that the city is bringing as item agenda number thirteen. Um, really amazing, uh, findings on that one and looks really great and, um, I hope it's okay with you, but the county is using your resolution as a template for ours. And I, I would suggest that, um, we bring in the other municipalities as well and, and have a group effort. I think Fredonia has already indicated that they'd be interested in, um, on one hand, it's good to have all of us saying slightly different stuff, but on the other hand, that's such a thing of beauty that, like, it to be repeated. Um, also, just in case you don't listen to all the county commission meetings and so you're not aware of this, the state has done some funding ordinances or, um, funding laws that almost force the county to enact an additional tax, a local option, sales tax, um, in order to unlock some roads funding for our county. And, um, we're still working out the exact details. There's three different options that we might be able to go with. We're trying to navigate either not raising taxes any more than absolutely necessary or, um, folding it in with a decrease. But it will impact, it looks like, your people and not just the unincorporated areas of the county. So we're looking at up to a point two five percent tax, a sales tax increase. I think that's about it. Um, J D, with the stuff, the cleanups that you're doing to get ready for heat stroker, have you already coordinated with, um, like, our volunteer department?
No, it's just something that the sheriff's office does a, a service project every year. We haven't done one yet this year and so they offered to do that as part of, but we'd love any help that we can, we can get, so.
I think Lynell Dove's currently the volunteer coordinator of the.
Yeah, I can chat to her too as well.
Thanks very much. And I can't stay tonight. I'm going to the county, um, school board meeting now. So anyway, thanks again.
Thank you. Thanks for the updates. Um, is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment? See ya. All right, if not, we will move out of public comment period and head into item number six, a discussion and consideration of an ordinance adopting the Canav City standard specifications for design and construction. Uh, will we hear from Janay? I wasn't sure on this. Janay first. Okay.
So this was brought to city council maybe a month ago and we, you guys wanted a little bit more time to review the standards. Um, we did have one public hearing comment from Josh Beazer from Iron Rock, um, regarding some of the requirements for as-built, um, boundary markers and, uh, manholes and things like that. I have talked to Jake and Kyler both a little bit about that. And one of the main reasons we would like those as-built is Jake has spent a lot of time on some of his G I S mapping for where sewer manholes are, where water connections are. And to not have those as-built design maps given to us, he will have to send his crew out to get those. So that is one of the reasons we would like to keep those G I S maps updated. Um, we, I also sent the appendices to, uh, Josh, but I have not received any comments on those. The appendices mainly are checklists though. They're checklist for the construction drawings, site plans, um, inspection reports, things like that.
I have a question. Would, would the civil engineer plans for a project, would they suffice at, rather than G I S, uh, ma- mapping on those or would they?
That might be a better question for Jake. I don't quite understand. Is G I S, K I S mapping as well?
As long as they're as-built and not just designed.
Uh huh.
They'd have to be corrected with updates for as-built.
Okay.
I speak a little bit to that. As a designer, a lot of times you don't know how to build. So what as-built are contract record drawings require is have a surveyor who would go out and verify it. And I, and a lot of times they're followed, you know, but there's times where you gotta move a manhole, you gotta move a water valve. And so that's where you gotta pick that up, those changes up and then submit that in G I S.
Well, I've seen it on plans before as, um, some time ago when we did a subdivision, we just made a, updated, we, we just, any changes we had, we put on the plan on the civil engineering thing. I don't think we made any changes. We did it as it was and, but, and then turned that into the city and they kept track of it there, but.
And I think those will suffice, you know, if there's red lines and, and as long, as long as G, you all know G I S is semi-close.
Yeah.
As long as we're close, we know there's a valve or a manhole there, I think that's good.
Well, I, I think something that would help too is like, that helps identify that we haven't been doing. We did, done a little bit in Mesa Hills, but, uh, mark our curb and gutters where the sewer and water lines go through just with a stamp. And it's a lot easier to, to locate those, I think, where the, because it shows, you know, where it'll go through and, and the, and the installation when they're doing curb and gutter, it's easy to do if you have a stamp for it. Just say, you know, just a W and an S and stamp it and a lot of times with an arrow on it showing which way they go and, or off of a valve placement where they, they show the arrow directions off the valves. So they'll know where they're at. Okay.
You guys got any other questions? Um, and then do, were we gonna have civil science come up and talk about this a little more?
If you have questions, I mean, if you have questions, Cody's here and can help answer any of those questions.
Okay.
I may also, so I sit on the.
You can come up.
Yeah, so Cody Howick with civil science. I also sit on the city engineer board for Canav City. Uh, there's five of us on the board for the state of Utah. Uh, there's a big push statewide to go to these standards. So I bet you half the municipalities in Utah already use these. They're updated for free as, as a committee. There's A P W A committee and so there's a big push to go these, to these statewide, right Ken?
Yeah, there, there's a chance and again, it's not that you have to act on it because there's a chance, but there's a chance the state legislature, um, moves towards a statewide adopted standard. Um, it, it's just in discussion, but, but it's just for us to be moving this direction or maybe just moving in the direction that the trend, that other cities in the state may be trending.
A lot of standards you see are done twenty, twenty-five years ago, like St. George's cities are twenty-five years old and not updated. The asphalt spec in it is way outdated. And that's frustrating as a designer that, you know, there's better technology and better things. It's, it's frustrating as a public works director. You get, you get water valves that you don't want and when you go to replace materials, it's not the stuff you want. And so just having a good standard across the board is really important. And by the way, we've been using these standards on all your public works projects that we do to, to date, for the last seven, eight years. So stuff that we've been incorporating.
I had a question for you on the, when I was looking through the different requirements for, for road widths and curbs and stuff like that, is a mountable curb used in there? I didn't see it.
I believe there's six, there's six different versions of curb and gutter that can be used. And obviously there's a standard set if, and as you go forward and you, if you adopt these standards, there's ways that we can change them a little bit for your community. And each community may have a different set of curb and gutter or different mountable curb they want. So I believe there's, if I remember right, there's maybe two or three. There's a rolled curb and then there's a modified, uh, curb. I don't know, Chris, maybe you know a little bit more about.
High back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's the traditional high back. So you, there's the ability to choose.
Okay.
Gives you a lot of options.
You guys got other questions while Cody's up there?
Nothing. Well, that was fun reading.
Well, thanks Cody. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Okay, okay. Well, we, this is kind of our second go-around talking about this. So is there anything else you guys wanted to discuss or anything else to add?
No, I, I think that it's, I, I think it's, I, I can see where it'll maybe entail a little bit more price, you know, for the developer and stuff like that. But as has been brought to my attention that in the long run, it would save the city money and a lot of hassles to have it and I, and the uniformity in materials and, and the regulations and things like that where they'll all, you know, it, a contractor comes in, he, he knows that, you know, if he's done public works where they've had these, you know, these type of things before, he, he won't have any problem with them and they'll just go through. Uh, seemed like there was one other thing though. Now, did this include the, does this include the, the impact fee studies and all that stuff?
I think that's our next item, correct?
That's, that's the next item.
So we'll talk about that on our next one. Yeah.
Uh, one thing that I really like the consistency of is like with the drainage study, the traffic study. So, so when people come into my office or wherever, they know what triggers these things right away. So we don't have to go to a development committee and say, do we need a traffic study here or there? It's just clear, clean. Um, I really like that. The other thing that I, that I like in the review process, um, it's simple. We know exactly what we're gonna review. Um, civil science, I'm sure really will like that. Janay's gonna love that because it's just a standard and we know exactly what that standard is. Um, I had similar concerns, uh, as Arlen did with the costs. Um, cause we're talking any form of subdivision, whether it's a really small one or a large one, those costs kind of go across the board. And so for a small subdivision, those costs are really gonna go up, shooting as-bills and different things like that. Um, but I agree with Arlen, um, with Jake as well, that it's gotta be paid for some way and the.
A lot, you know, that isn't in a subdivision or anything like that. I think that some of the requirements like for, uh, you know, drainage off of it or something like that. I think Janay, she could make a call on that, whether it's necessary or not because, well, for example, the one I'm gonna build for my daughter, it's on the edge of our field and any runoff just goes in the field. That's where all the runoff goes. And so it wouldn't matter, you know, if they, there's nothing to, to restrict flow or any, there are no reason to restrict flows to keep them on the lot or anything like that. And I think there are occasions when that happens, when you're building in fields or places that are just a isolated building. I can see it in a subdivision where they have, especially where we've had, where they talked about terracing it and the grade from one lot to the other with retaining walls and stuff like that. I think that's needed because of the erosion that takes place and wash down to another one or something like that.
A lot of the grading falls under the building codes as well. There, there are requirements for that. But it, it does go off of your street levels and your, for your curb level. And where you don't have that, I don't, I don't know how that we would require it or enforce that. So in those situations. But if they're building in.
Where you need to keep still the stuff out of the drain, uh.
If they're building in like the downtown city area that the streets are already there, you would want them to kind of build up their lot at least to meet that twelve inch or sixteen inch requirement.
You guys got any other questions or anything to add? Okay. Well, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll put forward a motion that we approve the amendments of the proposed Canav City design standards and adopt ordinance five dash one dash twenty-three oh.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any questions on that? This will be a roll call vote. We'll start down here with Scott.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, the motion is passed and we will move to item number seven, a discussion and consideration of a work task order with civil science to complete the Canav impact fee facilities plans and analysis for water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, recreation and public safety. Kyler?
Yeah, just as a, a brief introduction here, uh, the city collects impact fees and as part of that, uh, per state code, we have to go through an impact fee analysis on each of the items that we collect an impact fee for. Uh, and so you can see it's water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, uh, recreation, and then public safety is, those are the areas that we collect impact fees in. The last time we did an impact fee analysis was five years ago and we have to do that every six years. Uh, so it's now becoming the time to start looking at that analysis again. Uh, what is before you is a, is a, is a, some information from civil science on, on a proposal that they've created. Uh, the total of that is two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and, uh, that is something that can be paid for out of impact fees. Uh, and so that is something that within each of those funds will pay for likely from the impact fees that are, have been collected already. Uh, but I think it might be best if, if Cody comes up from civil science and he'll give some, uh, some information on exactly what they're anticipating for each of these studies. It includes a wide range. Uh, and you can see there's cost differences. Public safety is gonna be a little easier, uh, a lot less to do there, uh, versus transportation, which is a lot more intense, uh, where they're doing a lot more of that mapping and, and putting together some, some tangibles for us to have in that study. So, uh, if it's all right, if Cody comes, comes up and gives some information on that.
So yeah, like Kyler said, in twenty, I think we adopted them in twenty eighteen, but we worked on them for probably a whole year to get them passed back in twenty seventeen. And then, uh, yeah, like Kyler said, every six years you, you're gonna wanna update those. So part of this update is taking everything that's, we've done in the last seven years, updating our models that we hold for the city. So that's the water model, the sewer model, stormwater model, transportation model, and then, uh, coming up with a future plan in, hey, where does this, where do we wanna be in ten years? And where do we wanna be in twenty years? And then identifying what's, what would be attributable to new growth versus what, what's like an existing problem you have. And then from that, we determine what your impact fee costs are. And again, you can't charge impact fees on any existing deficiency in, any of those systems. Uh, we work pretty, so there's a model we do on each one of those that tells us kind of your existing deficiencies, but then we work with your department heads to understand realistically, like, what other problems are, are there that you're aware of out there and try to get that as part of the plan as well. So that we're trying to identify a holistic approach to each plan. We have a really good idea on water, like on all those plans, and we've been working really hard over the last five, six years to get to the point where we're at right now. And I can tell you, a lot of the existing deficiencies in the systems you've had, we've paid for out of grant funds, we've, we've, we've found and other, other manners. And then as development comes in and you need to upsize things, you have the money based on these impact fees to upsize things. That's the idea behind it. So I know there's a long scope of work in there in the task order. I don't know if you have any questions regarding anything there. And then really, uh, we take all this. So it, it answers the questions of, you know, what do you have right now? What do you need? How do we get what you need and how much does it cost? It's kind of the, it's kind of how I like to simplify the plans. Cause in the end, like, everyone likes to see stuff being built out there and that proper plans were done. It's important that there, that we work with your department heads to understand what their plans are and, and things like that, so.
I, I got a question. I've probably asked it a bunch of times already with recreation and parks. With the Rancho's park, was that one of those things that qualified or not? I've been, I've gotten it confused, I think, with, we had, or, we had so many other things, so.
So I believe, I'm pretty, pretty certain that the area that's not developed right now.
Yep, that qualifies.
So there's a pers, so in the impact fee analysis, it's a certain percentage that park can be developed with impact fees.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Same thing with the tanks project we just did. A certain percentage of that's attributable to, to new growth. And so we were, I think, able to get that twenty-five percent eligible.
Okay.
Same thing with that park.
Okay.
Do you have a question, Cody?
Yeah.
When you, when you're doing the analysis and things like that, since you did the last analysis, are you just building on that or do you have to go back and re, reanalyze everything? Just so we go back through everything or what?
So there's. So the last analysis, I actually, I think we, you paid two hundred and eighty, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars and that was seven, six years ago. So you do have a substantial cost savings here. Uh, we do have your models. We do have to go through and update all the elevations and things on new things that have. On new things that have happened over the last seven years. And then we have to calibrate and rerun the models. So. Really, the savings you're getting, uh, is that we don't have to go do the inventory. So we don't have to go dip. I mean, I think the last time we did it, we dipped every sewer manhole in the city. Took us a month to do that with one of our guys, so. There's some cost savings there. Then you run the models, you see where your deficiencies are, and then you put together a plan. And yeah, we have parts of that plan that we've. Done in the last time, but I think things have changed. And we gotta kind of understand, you know, the direction the city wants to go and their department heads. And what what direction they wanna go with each of those utilities. So there's a pretty good effort and then, so yeah, once you, there's a little bit of overlap in the model. And then from there, it's just new plans, new financial analysis, new impact fee analysis from there.
You guys got any other questions about this?
Skyler, yeah, Kyler, do you know how much we collected in stormwater impact fees? I was looking, I can't find my Excel spreadsheet.
Which, stormwater is that? So year to date, we're about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand in stormwater impact fees collected.
Cause there were a lot of things that didn't qualify for stormwater, right? A lot of the existing problems.
Yeah. And I'm maybe speaking, I'm, I think our goal there for the stormwater fund was to. We've got a big stormwater project coming up that the city's gonna have to match funding on. And that's kind of the plan with those fees.
The one that we've been doing all the studies on and everything.
Twenty million dollar stormwater project and you need, you're gonna have to match twenty-five percent of it, which is a great deal, to be honest.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the plan with those fees.
Okay. Guys got any other questions about any of that? Nothing?
Give you an idea, we're, I mean, we're getting ready to do Hurricane City's Park Certain Rec Master Plan and we're probably about sixty thousand dollars to do that one. Sixty to seventy, so.
We're about half of that, I guess.
You're about, yeah, a third of that, so.
All right. Well, nothing else?
Don't tell the hurricane guys we're getting such a good deal.
Well, we have to start there from scratch, so.
Well, thanks.
Always hard to work with.
Yeah, and we know how they're, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Uh, if there's nothing else to add, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the task order with civil science to update the Canab Impact Fee Facilities Plans and Analysis.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is passed and we'll move to number eight, item number eight, a discussion and consideration of a work task order with civil science to provide engineering. And design for the Canab Spring Redevelopment Project. Uh, Kyler will tell us a little more about this.
Yeah, so Congressman Stewart has submitted the projects, uh, fifteen projects that he. Uh, is interested in having funded, uh, through that community project funding. Uh, this Cave Lakes Redevelopment Project is is one of those projects. Uh, we are still working to. To figure out some more details on that funding and and how it's gonna be coming through. Uh, and so just know the. Staff's still working through, I think we've, we've reached out to Army Corps of Engineer, a couple of different offices, uh, to try and get some details. Uh, what you have before you is a a work order or task order with civil science to provide engineering. Uh, and that has changed, I think we we put something in there on Friday, there's, there've been some changes since Friday. Uh, as we've negotiated and worked through exactly what this is gonna look like, I'm moving forward. Uh, I did, wanna make sure this is the updated one. This is, okay, perfect. Uh, so this is, uh, just an update. If you have the older version of the packet, you won't be able to see that. Uh, but that task order price is two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, that's for them to start the engineering. Uh, we have from October one, well, we have until October of twenty twenty-four to get this project complete. Uh, with the federal financing. And so that means, uh, getting to work pretty quickly. Uh, and so. What we're hoping is to start on that preliminary design, uh, so that it can be ready, uh, to start work as soon after October one as possible. Uh, and so we're actually, I think, within the proposed motion, I just have a caveat, uh, for you to approve. That, uh, just after staff can confirm the financing, uh, and prod- uh, the project regulations that'll be coming. Through Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, I think we're gonna end up reaching out to Chris Stewart's office to see if they have any more information. Uh, but civil science is here again, uh, to answer any questions you may have on this project.
And before they come up, just, I guess for the public and and for me, just to clarify, that will all come from. That will be totally funded by, at least this part that we're talking about right now will be totally funded by Congressman Stewart's.
So what what we in?
Is what we think right now.
What we're anticipating is a eighty-twenty match, so.
For the total.
For the, for the total project. And so we, we anticipate one point six million of federal funding. Through this project, uh, with about four hundred thousand coming from, uh, the city. Uh, and that would come from our water. Re- revenues.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's something that we'll also discuss in the budget.
And maybe you might have said this and I might have just missed it. Do we know, know when we will know a little bit more about? When we get that funding?
Yeah, I'm optimistic, well, it's the federal government, so, uh. Where the, they pass a bill annually, uh, with these types of projects. Uh, it's very likely, based on the fact that we're one of the projects on Chris Stewart's list, on Congressman Stewart's list. Uh, that that'll continue to go through with the federal funding, uh, but we can't be sure until that bill's passed. And so there is some level of risk that we're taking in designing this, uh, prior to, uh, that full approval. Uh, it's limited and also the value of this project, this is one of our top priority projects that we've talked about. And so even if. Uh, for, if circumstances happen where the funding fell through. The design and engineering is something we'd have to do anyways for this project to to allow for the source to be used. And so it's not a sunk cost that we won't be able to recover. It's a cost that we'll have to to do no matter what if we get the funding through the federal government. Or if we have our, if we have to fund it all on our own.
Uh, Kent and I went to a coordination hearing meeting or and Congressman Stewart's staff was there. And she spoke to a little bit about the timeline and when it was gonna happen. So it has to go to federal budget. So now it's been like accepted. It's not even really approved. It's approved and accepted, but it still has to go into budget. She, she spoke to, and I don't wanna overspeak, but she kind of spoke to it like. Novemberish at the soonest.
And we've kind of know for a little bit more, for sure. All right. And I guess to maybe qualify, we're, we've kind of gotta get it moving. That's, that's kind of. All right, I guess. Okay, all right. Uh, Cody, you got more to add? Or, oh, Trevor, thanks. Okay.
Yeah, if you have any questions, I think you guys have talked a lot about this project. It's gonna diversify your water source and, you know, how big of a water. You know, water's a big deal in Southern Utah right now, so I think this just sets you up even better than where you, what you are right now. And in, and an eighty-twenty match, man, that's unheard of.
Yeah.
You know, so.
And Mayor, we, we gotta look at it a little bit further, but kind of coinciding with the impact the analysis that's going on, we've gotta determine whether or not we can. Uh, potentially tap into our impact fees to help.
Help match.
Some of our match, but it's not, the hard thing is our prior, uh, impact the analysis related to water actually identified them as a source, which. It's really, it, it, we may have to revisit that issue, cause if we wanted to use that water right now, we couldn't. So it's, while we have a water right, we don't have a usable water right currently. So we may have to.
So there's a possibility.
But, but I just wanted to let you know as you're making this decision that that's at least one avenue we might look for to help earth our match.
Okay.
And Trevor, if you don't mind, could you explain mostly for the public, why this? Project or Jake, if you wanna jump in, why this project is so important and and the diversity that Cody's talking about, what it offers differently than what we have now?
Yeah, so right now, the water sources, the wells, which are dependent on power, this provides, you know, the diversity is. This is a free water source. It's an investment upfront that you have, you know, zero, um, infrastructure costs once it's online. So that's, that's a huge benefit to the city over a long period of time.
And real quick, piggybacking off that question, um, I was told once that potentially the amount of water that would come from. These springs would about take care of Canab during the winter months. Is that close to accurate? You sto- but, but it's close, it's it's substantial.
I think, I think we're, I think, yes, two hundred and fifty gallons per minute for the water right.
For the water right?
That's probably gonna be a limiting factor. There's, there's enough springs up there, I think, to exceed that.
But two hundred and fifty gallons a minute, that's a, that's a lot of water.
So picture like you're drilling a well, you know, you might spend a million and a half on a well.
Mm-hmm.
You should have two million on this, so it's a little bit more upfront cost, but long term.
Well, and then it's gravity flow clear to town.
Well, which is also great during i- if there are periods of prolonged power outages, we're still have some water source that's gonna fill. Uh, it might not be enough for everyone to water their lawns and keep the hotels open, but we probably have enough to do. Do some emergency drinking water and also it, it's the cost savings that it creates in the offset too. That it offsets some of the power needed to pump, uh, and will reduce some of the pumping that we'll have to do during that time, right?
It's important to note, Canab was on these springs previously, it just haven't been lately.
I think this is a great project, I was in with Jake about it and and the potential long term for. For how it can help us i- in a variety of ways.
Yeah, I second, I went with Jake, it's been probably a year or so now that we wound up and looked at it. And there's a lot of water spilling into that valley that's not getting used and we've got the right, we need to not waste it, we need to get it down here and use it. I think it's great.
I have a question, there's a, another canyon just south of Moki Cave on the west side that goes up in there and they did have a water. They did have a pipe coming out of there, there's still, the pipe's still up in there. I- is that been filed on by the city or is that somebody else?
I'm sure you.
Nice.
Cause it runs out of the pipe, it's good water.
All right, you guys got any other questions about that? Anything else to add or?
Uh, just that, that takes us through construction, so that's design and construction. And really. We need to get up there and understand the springs a little bit more and that's kind of in that preliminary engineering design, so that we can. Start putting plans together so that we're shovel ready come November, that's the main goal. It takes time to get ready, so.
Great. All right, thank you, guys. Any, anything else to add or any questions, anything from staff to add on this?
So with that proposed motion, I just have, uh, to approve the task order. And I said, after confirmation on financing and project regulations is is received from the Army Corps of Engineers. So that just allows staff to do. A little more follow-up, uh, but we need to get moving on this fairly quickly. And so, uh, we wanted to allow for the council to make the decision. But the staff to do those two items of follow-up to make sure that we're, uh, doing our due diligence prior to approval.
I know that some of us have talked previously, Kyler, is, and I think Kent touched on, is this, is this gonna strap us? To put this money upfront? Or is, or are we able to draw for some different funds to where we're not gonna be totally strapped?
Yeah, the, the water and sewer fund is is one of our healthier funds and so. Uh, we should be able to cover this. And and we can, uh, so I think there's about two million dollars in 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 revenues there. In in fund balance there.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on this?
They said civil science gave us a money back guarantee too, if we didn't get the project, right?
I think that's what you gotta add in the motion.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the task order with civil science for the Cave Lakes Spring Development Project after confirmation on financing. And project regulations is received from the Army Corps of Engineers.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is passed and we'll move to item number nine, a discussion and consideration of a resolution approving the twenty twenty-four Canab City Tentative Budget. And we'll hear from Kyler on this.
Let's pull that up. Um, and thanks civil science for coming, by the way.
Uh, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
You guys charge us by the hour, you leave. Okay, staff is required to prepare a tentative budget for you and we do this in the first meeting of of May. Uh, we have to do it every year. Uh, and so what you have before you is a tentative budget. Uh, there has, that is really hard to read. It's easier for me to read on my screen, let me zoom in really quick. Um, uh, what we're proposing is a little different from what's in your packet. There's a couple changes that have been made. Uh, and so I want to to walk through a few of those. And, okay, so first, this is our general fund. The general fund's the largest fund that we have. Uh, and it's, that is still hard to read. Is that any better?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, and so this is, this is what's funding police and fire and our general government. Uh, and so I wanna just point out, the, one of the concerns is that. Over the last two years, we've lost some money in our general fund and so we wanna make sure that that's something that's addressed, uh, this year. As we go to funding agencies, that's something they're looking at in our ability to pay a debt or to pay, uh, pay additional costs. And so. Uh, you can see right now, uh, we are doing fairly well. Uh, there's about. Seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in surplus, uh, currently in the year. Uh, we're projecting about fifty-four thousand dollars. Surplus, and that's a conservative estimate. There's a few, a few other funds that I think will come in. With this, uh, I can just point out that there are some increases that we're projecting with taxes. And I'll go actually, I'll go to a different spreadsheet that's more specific to revenues here. Uh, so we are anticipating some increases in our property tax. That's based on growth, uh, new development that's taken place within the city. Um, but, uh, old development, we don't get an increase in 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 revenues. And so. Know that that's the case and and that if we want to increase those, uh, we'll have to go through a process that we've talked about, which is the truth in taxation process. Uh, we are seeing some increases in our, uh, sales tax revenues, uh, and also this sales tax resort. Uh, the transient room, uh, that TRT funding that we receive, uh, we have seen a decline, not enough to reduce the budget. I think that, uh, we're at a hundred and ninety-eight thousand right now. Uh, that actual in twenty twenty-two. Uh, was two eighty-seven and we're seeing maybe ten or thou- ten thousand or lower than that. So. Uh, we still should come in right at that budgeted amount, uh, but that TRT funding has seen a slight decline. Uh, this year as we look at year over year. Uh, beyond that, uh, the revenues are fairly consistent. Uh, I wanna point out building permits, uh, our actual this year is about three hundred thousand dollars. We're projecting it to drop. This next year. If we look at the last six months in building permits, uh, that has declined. The fire revenues, fire department fees received, you can see that's an increase. Uh, I just wanna remind you all that. That's something that took place with, uh, the hospital agreement changed, uh, that's allowing for us to pay for additional staffing in our fire department. Uh, which has helped our general fund, uh, increasing those revenues. Are there any questions about the revenues coming in from the general fund from from the council? I think it might be easiest to digest and ask questions in. In groups like that. It's five point one million dollars, uh, almost five point two million dollars in revenues that we're anticipating, uh, over the next budget year.
Guys got any, I, I assume you're just looking at it. I think we probably will have questions, I should give us.
And this is, this is a tentative budget, so we're approving a tentative budget tonight, uh, by a resolution. Uh, but we have up through the actual. Up through the actual approval of the budget, uh, to make changes. Uh, what would, would be interesting, I think there has been talks of, of going through a, a truth in taxation process. Uh, that will actually delay our approval of the final budget until August. Uh, so even though the fiscal year's starting in July, uh, the approval could potentially be delayed until about August date. Uh, so we do have time to take input from the community, uh, to take input from the council, uh, and so just know that. When we approve this tentative budget tonight, you're not setting it in stone, uh, that it really is just. Uh, a, a process that's required by the state to give the public an opportunity to look at the budget and to provide their own feedback as well.
Can you go up Kyler, just real quick?
Yeah. Are you guys okay if I move on or?
Sure.
Perfect. Uh, so within the general fund, like I said, we've gone over the, the revenues that will be received. Uh, what we'll do is go through individual departments, uh, within the general fund and, and talk about some of the changes. Uh, I do wanna talk about a, a couple shortcomings of this budget, uh. As it's provided, so right now, this is a, a budget that the revenues and expenditures match. So we're at zero here, uh, but there are a few things that we don't have in this budget that the council may wanna consider. Uh, one is, uh, that this budget does not contemplate a cost of living increase for employees. And so that's not, that's not in here, uh, and if the council wants to do that. Uh, that's about, within the general fund, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars for every one percent, uh, in a cost of living, uh, adjustment. Uh, there's a wide range that we're seeing in the state of Utah on what cities are showing for cost of living adjustments, uh, based on the data they're using. Uh, some have gone up as high as about six point three is what we're seeing in western states for, uh, inflation. Uh, if you look at the CPI W, which is CPI, uh, Consumer Price Indexes for Wages, that's about four point three percent. And so there's a lot of different matrix that you could use to justify what that cost of living increase is, uh, but that's not currently included in this budget. So if we, uh, decide on a number for a cost of living increase, that'll be something that, uh, will take us out of that. Balance budget and will cause us to take from reserves. Uh, so I wanna say that that's something that's not in there. Additionally, we've talked about a new police station, that's not in this general fund budget, uh. And so we anticipate about a ninety-one thousand dollar payment annually for about ten years, uh, to pay off that facility. Uh, we wouldn't have any payments due this budget year, uh, because it's likely the budget, the payment would be due on July of twenty twenty-four. Uh, but it's something we need to be considering as we move forward because it is a hundred thousand dollars in our general fund that will be coming up. Okay, with those, a couple shortcomings explained, uh, I'll show you the, the administrative budget. A few things to, to look at here, uh, the election expenses is something we don't often see, uh, and there's a fifteen thousand dollars we anticipate for. An election that'll be taking place this next year. Uh, the cost for our auditing has increased slightly, so you can see that going from twenty-nine to thirty-five. Uh, and then a slight increase in utilities, uh, beyond that, this budget's staying fairly consistent, uh. Any questions on administration before we move on?
I think we need to talk about a COLA, um, I don't know if we wanna talk about it after we get.
It might be, it might be beneficial after we do the full, after we do, cause it would be applying to everyone.
Yeah, let's go through everything.
And, and just as a, a clarification, we do put a three percent step increase for employees in there, so that's something we've done annually. So that is within the budget, so you are seeing an increase in salaries, that's a three percent.
Right.
Uh, so I, so I wanna make sure that that's clear. There's also a five point five percent increase on benefits for health insurance that we're seeing this, this year.
That's in the budget.
That's, that is included in the budget.
Yeah.
This judicial or city attorney, uh, this public defender fee, we're keeping the same and keeping consistent. Uh, and there's no change, uh, beyond, uh, some adjustments in salaries for, uh, the city attorney fund that's here. Any questions there? Let's move on.
What about the computer maintenance contract in that? That's a pretty heavy line item. Is it just for the legal?
It's for Ken's new fancy computer, but.
Well, fourteen thousand dollars just for the maintenance, I'm just wondering.
Uh, so legal is forty-three, we see ten forty-three, the computer maintenance contract.
Two hundred forty-one thirty-five.
Oh, so that's, you're looking at, you're looking at administration?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry, which, which were we on?
We're, we're, we've, we've moved on, we've moved on.
I know, we were back there.
Sorry, there's a lot of pages, you're looking through quite a few pages and numbers.
I thought you were joking.
Right.
I was, I was a little confused there too.
Two hundred twenty-nine dollars.
See where they're looking now, Scotty.
Right here, Scott.
Yeah, so we're in the ten forty-threes and ten forty-twos.
I think he's wondering, he's got his questions about the ten forty-one.
Administration.
Computer, um, management cost, which is essentially our IT.
Yeah, and, and often a lot of them.
Beyond just the administration, it goes beyond that, correct?
Yeah, a lot of the emails for some of our employees even get coded out of that rather than being separated into individual departments, I believe. Uh, some of them do get separated, but a lot of the, a lot of the general costs for our servers get thrown in the administration budget. So that's why you're, maybe it's noticing it a little higher than, than most. It's our harvesting of Bitcoin here at City Hall, I guess, maybe it's. Uh, this community development has, uh, four different budgets that I put here, uh. The last two don't necessarily fit, but I needed a place to put them in the budget and so. The first one is the land use, uh, there have, there were some challenges with the allocation, so if you're looking at the year-to-date, uh, in land use and in building. Uh, the salaries weren't necessarily allocated appropriately for how they were supposed to be, and so that's something we've changed. Uh, also, I just wanna point out that some of these changes in costs, like engineering fees, is just really adjusting. Uh, where they've been allocated from the past, uh, and, and maybe be more specific, so you see this professional. Fees plan check is something that we've added in and this, the sundry payment to the state. Those are things that were allocated out of this office expenses line, we're just being a little more specific, uh. So it's not necessarily an increase in the budget, but just changing where it's seen. Uh, the arts board, uh, and beautification committee, uh, we're keeping the same, uh, down here. As well as the special events, uh, budget and, uh, all the way down through the economic development, uh, which is known as the mayor's fund. Uh, those are all staying the same as, as they have been budgeted in the past. It's likely that the volunteer center budget won't be used and the special events. Uh, we've had some negotiations with the county about what we're paying and what grants they're giving us. Uh, this is the money that typically, some of those are money that we were giving to the county that will no longer be given to the county. And so those are opportunities we have for grants internally, uh, for some of the projects we have with arts board, et cetera. Any questions on, uh, community development as a whole?
So are we giving ten thousand dollars to Seaver?
That is, that is what's budgeted and what we've done in the past.
So. Where we work that stuff out with the county with special events, can we lower that now or do we think we still need to keep it right around there?
It may be, so I think the reason I just left it in is it gives us a year to see how things are working, it gives the council the flexibility to.
Sure.
Uh, figure out what grants may be needed to replace that.
And then next year, we can see what we spend and then we're, that's a good idea, I think. So on Seva, what, I, I'm curious what we're giving that, what we're spending that on exactly.
Yeah, so that's, uh, to partially fund the position over there.
Okay. It's like a partnership with the county sort of, I guess, basically then?
Yeah, and so they send us an invoice and we'll pay that.
Okay. Alright.
Any other questions on this, uh, community development, uh, building, planning, et cetera? If not, we're moving on to police. Uh, there are just a couple different changes here, one is you can see that there's the sixty thousand dollars in police vehicles that we're anticipating this next year. Uh, that's to trade in, uh, their vehicles, they do that. For three years, two years? Uh, and so, uh, that's something we're anticipating. Uh, in the event that we have some savings there and there's a few things in the works to have some savings, that's, uh, money that we may be shifting to capital outlay. Uh, for funding, uh, some of our projects, uh. With the change in the police station, I think we've talked about some storage facilities, and so we may be looking at shifting those. Really, there's not a whole lot of change, uh, small increase in department supplies, I think we talked to, uh, that was requested for some additional. Was it additional, uh, bulletproof vests for some of the, the new employees? Um. And so not a whole lot of change here in, in police.
But these computer maintenance, is, are we getting a good deal here, I mean, could talk about it with, uh, cause we got six thousand here, fourteen thousand. About twenty thousand, maybe that's normal, I'm just.
Yeah, so, so these are also computer replacements too, so just know, it's not just the maintenance contract, that's. The cost for, for new computers, monitors, new technologies, it's, it's, it's changing, so I, 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 it's not, that's not just our contract.
Not just IT, okay, good.
Well, in looking at the year-to-date on, on that one, it's ten percent.
Tom, Tom is a really, our, our, our chief cram, uh, spends his budget at the end of the year, is that your strategy? So just know, just know, he's a really, he's really good at making sure that, uh, at the beginning of the year, he's, he's very tight with his budget. And then he, he uses that flexibility at the end, so just, just because you see that six hundred dollars.
Well, but, but, but looking at the pattern from the year before.
Sure.
It, it's, he's pretty conservative with it.
Okay.
Now with fire, there is, oh, I keep adding sheets on here because I don't know what I'm doing. Um, with fire, there is some increase you see, can see in that salaries, that's the addition of the two staff members. Uh, in addition to, uh, some staff time to help backfill shifts. Uh, as agreed to with the hospital, as part of our agreement. Uh, they are asking for some additional authority here with auto expenses, they've seen quite a few. Uh, as, as their equipment ages, they've seen quite a bit of, of a need for, for additional costs to, to help pay for. And I don't know, the problem is anytime they have to fix something, Brett's here, anytime they have to fix something, it's a, it's a significant cost. Because it's, the equipment's old, it takes a while to find, uh, very specialized and so, uh, that is where that increase is coming from there. Uh, and then a slight increase on the equipment supplies and maintenance, uh, just as those pieces of equipment are aging and, and. Chief Pearson has specific items and actually repairs that are already needed that those are tied to.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah.
So the. The, the extra cost for the expense for the vehicles, engine twenty-one is an old American LaFrance that has air-actuated valves. That we can no longer get. In order to keep that truck in service, we have to replace those valves, we have to replace those with a. With an electric valve and that, the cost of that ends up for fi- about five thousand per valve. And so that extra cost is just to replace valves to keep that engine in service. The extra cost on the expenses is we had a triple-flight ladder fail, which we only have one. Which still on the truck, it's been, we've been, I've been told, I've told them, don't use it unless we absolutely need it, it's the only one we have. So if we had a rescue, we would still obviously use it. It's not, it failed, so it's not, it's got safety issues. It needs to be replaced. One has been ordered, but, um, the cost on that's four thousand plus. And that, that cost was in that. Also, the, our ram, when you have a head-on collision. You sometimes have to take a ram and spread the dash back out. Our ram failed and it was too old to get parts for. The new ram is ten thousand dollars and that's a specific co- a, a cost that's in that. And that's the additional costs in those, they, they go directly to those, those pieces of equipment. That failed because our old equipment is old and you can no longer get parts. Do you guys have any questions on any of that? So have we bought new rams then? We have not. Have we looked into grant funding for, for rams because there's lots of grant funding that stuff? We, we, we have, we currently have grant funding out for our SCBA's on an, on a truck. I have grant funding, so the grant funding for the rams, it doesn't apply for the state license plate grant. We could, if we wrote, if we didn't write for SCBA, so SCBA's is gonna about a, be about a three hundred thousand dollar. And we, you can't, i- if you write a grant for SCBA's and rams, you're very, you're not likely to get it cause they don't like a laundry list. They like it to be the same. And so to write the grants, we have written, we, the last time we wrote the Firehouse Subs Grant for thirty-four thousand and got the turnouts. We're one more year out before we can get that. There currently isn't a gr- a grant that I know of that fits that, that we are eligible for. Um, unless you, like, the license plate grant, it doesn't quite cover that and it's not likely that that would, we would get that on that one. It's more for like equipment like radios, um, smaller equipment. I don't know of a grant currently that we did, we haven't already written for something else. For that. The same with the triple-flight ladder, like, we need it, it could fit in some of those grant things, but. The, the grants, the bigger grants that I'm going after, we're actually going for stuff, like our SCBA's when they expire, that's a big ticket item. The, um, engine we wrote for, that's a big ticket item. And I, I hesitate to write a four thousand dollar grant instead of a three hundred thousand dollar grant or a half a million dollar grant in place of it. But I, I don't know of a, currently of a grant that would fit that ram. I'd be happy to write one. Uh, yeah, deal with me, I think there might be some options actually. Okay. And if, even if, like, yeah, I would, I'd be, we'd be happy to do that. There's a, there's just a lot of companies, even at St. George's, that supply stuff, that they have grant options. E- even through private, it doesn't have to be a state, federal. No, and that, that's the fire, that's the Firehouse Subs Grant that we got for the turnouts. So it's, it's the same, it's kind of the same thing and we can see if it's still up, it's just, uh, yeah, it's an option, may not work out, but. Yeah, either way, currently we're using, we have Glendals, we have Ordervilles actually on the truck. They are the old stuff that we no longer can use and they leak. We have big issues, like it's a, it's an item that we need to replace soon because in a head-on, we may be calling Freedonia or Big Water to come bell us out. And so we can write a gra- it's something we need to get fairly quickly, cause that's our. Head-ons is something that we have fairly frequent that are high, that have a lot of, it's a hu- higher risk of fatality in our area.
Well, we can look at that maybe.
I, I.
Some stuff and then.
Yeah, and we can look at the timeline, I'll talk to you.
We can adjust it if we, if we find stuff.
Right.
I guess.
Do you have any other?
Looked like you had something to, okay.
Nope.
Thought you had something that's, anything else or?
Do you have any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, well, can you go by? Sorry, I was. Okay. I thought I saw something, I was.
With our streets budget, uh, a couple of things that we've changed is, one is, Jake's requested for additional training. Uh, so that they can do some road school and, and additional training there, uh, within the streets department. Uh, really beyond that, we're, uh, expanding our class C. Really beyond that, we're expanding our Class C roads. This is an area. That I think the community's really under invested in. And it's going to be a struggle because it's competitive with general fund dollars. And so in the future, I think it's something we need to be continuing to consider as additional options. I think Commissioner.
Meyer.
Myers, thanks, came in and talked about some funding that they're looking for through a sales tax. And that might be something that will give us some additional monies as well as, if we make some requests through a regional or a county system. And so it's something I think we need to consider in the future, but there's not a whole lot of wiggle room right now within the budget. And so it's, you can see that it's fairly consistent with what we have in, in the past.
I think Jake can start paying his guys though.
Yeah, so. So there's no, there's no employees who are paid out of the streets budget. They're all paid out of a different fund. And we do that, the general fund tends to be fairly competitive and, and a lot of their work ends up being out of the utilities. All of their work is utilities.
Yes, good on streets. Go on.
Airport's also fairly consistent with what we've seen in the past. I do want to point out that we did increase that fuel purchase line. That fuel purchase line, as we increase the purchase of fuels, it is offset with a revenue that comes in from the sales of fuels. And so while there's a hundred, is it maybe a hundred thousand dollars, a little less than a hundred thousand dollars increase there, we're offsetting that with some revenues. And so it's not something that needs to be as concerning as maybe it looks.
Well, that's in regards to the new fuel farm project, right? And we're hoping to add more.
So I think there's been a few months that we've not sold jet fuel this year. And as costs go up, the fuel farm will be delayed just slightly. We were hoping to have it done this year, but because we're having to finance the, some of the bill money, which is some of the ARPA money that's coming in. We've not received it yet. We're waiting for that. And so in order to do the project this year, we would have to fund it upfront and then get reimbursed. We didn't feel comfortable with that. And so we've delayed that project to allow for the federal dollars to come in prior to paying for that fuel farm. But we do anticipate those numbers will go up as the, as the fuel farms develop at the airport.
Are we able to dispense fuel out of the truck yet?
Part of the, so I thi- we, we do have some and there's a repair in there in the equipment supplies and maintenance. You're seeing a slight increase, which is for a motor at the truck to help there.
We're good to keep going?
Parks and Cemetery. Not a whole lot of changes here as well. The equipment supplies and maintenance line has a slight increase. For a project that Donnie's proposing. But beyond that, I think everything else is staying the same.
Is that Fourth of July expenses? That's what we spent on fireworks?
That is.
And are we good to go on all that again?
Yeah, cause that was.
There was some issues that need to be resolved, right?
Whatever happened, are we ever gonna get?
Cause didn't we have some that were purchased and then we didn't get them? And then we got them?
Yes, we have, we currently.
So they.
Thanks for bringing that up.
We're good to go this year. And we have, we have some orders from a different vendor to replace. Spencer Mossville heads that up mostly, cause he's the one who licensed and set off fireworks. The drama with the past suppliers, we can, like. We've worked, we're, we worked through that some, but we did get some resolution out of that, but. We, we're still not finished.
So we're still trying to get?
Yeah.
And we spent money and we've not got the product?
Yeah. So they, we have their mortars. And they, they're saying that it's, we're even because we rent their, we rented their mortars and that was. And that wasn't the understanding that I understood.
That was two years ago now.
No, yeah.
Two to three.
Right, so we, we paid for them two years ago. They delivered them last year, a year late. And delivered about half. They charged us for the, for having their mortars to, to even without, um, yeah.
Okay.
We're still working through that.
Okay.
Are we working with that supplier still?
Yeah.
An attorney offered.
Are we still working with that supplier?
Right.
Why?
Are we still working with that supplier?
Okay, good. That's good. Alright, well. Oh, tonight we good to keep moving?
Send our police department to do a raid?
Like, we're feeling good that that's all gonna get here on time and.
We have, we currently have enough for the, and we, we have, we're ordering, we have some more on order. That will be here on time. And we do have. Apparently the mortars that we got that, like, some of them are no longer usable, that they charged us for in that other. And so that, the other company is also supplying some mortars for us.
Okay.
To replace ones that are broke and not usable.
Okay.
That apparently are ours.
The Fourth of July will go on.
Yeah, we, we have a show, there is a show ready that's on order or, and ready to go. And working on the program currently.
Great.
It's, it's a work in progress.
That's a better spot than we were last year. We were kind of worried, so.
Yes.
That's great. Did not have to worry about it this year. Good. Where are we now? Library?
Library.
Okay.
There was some shifting of costs this year. We, we switched from one of our full-time positions, we went to part-time labor instead. So there are some cost savings there. And so you actually can see that this is a, a budget that did go down a little bit. And so that, I don't know if there's anything you have as far as questions?
Did we just trade it? It looks like the.
Yeah, so th- there's some of those, some of those monies went to part-time.
The benefits also went down.
And those benefits went down.
Okay. Alright, we keep going or?
Uh, with the museum, there's a slight adjustment. So you can see our projected this year is a little higher. That's with some of those renovations. And also with grant funding that's come in. And so Emily's done a really excellent job at getting some grants, which has required our budget to increase. And so that's, that's to explain that increase this year.
And utilities is just because we'll have everything up?
You know, utilities is, we've gone into this and. There are some utilities in the general fund that are being charged to the museum. And so we're, they've just not been charged adequately. And so we have the budget authority here to continue, but we anticipate that some of those will be shifted. They just, like I said, we're just mis- misallocated on, on where they've come from. And so Emily was, me and her sat down and we said, what's going on? Our utility shouldn't be that high in, in these facilities. And there's some park facilities that have been, their utilities are coming out of the, out of that fund. And so there's a few, a few different places that.
Baseball lines.
Or not baseball lines.
Skate park lines, is that right?
I can't remember what, what part of the park was being charged out of the museum. A historic part of the park is being charged out of the museum.
Yeah, that makes sense. When someone, I'll, I'll ask you this. I'll ask you after me, so we can keep going. I had a lights question, but. Let's just keep going.
Okay.
It'll just slow us down.
Uh, there's just a few other. Departments that are included in this general fund. So it looks like last year, there's ten thousand in this general government, general, general government buildings. But it also is here in this maintenance. And so we're gonna remove that one and have it just be in this maintenance line item. That's for. When a major repair comes that we weren't totally anticipating, we have that ten thousand dollars there and available. We are anticipating, so we get to our debt service fund, there's a need for this transfer to debt service to increase. Due to some of the debt payments that we have from the general fund that just was, wasn't adequately budgeted for. And then we are anticipating continuing our transfer to the capital projects fund at fifty thousand dollars. This might be the time, maybe as an intermission to hearing Kyler talk, that you could talk about. Because we're done with the general fund and, and what's going on there. This might be a good time to talk about the cost of living if you wanted to.
Okay. I agree with Chris on that, where you need to look at it. And it'll require us going through truth and taxation and stuff, but you can see that.
The hard part is, is right now, it's hard to try and keep pace with the inflation that we're seeing right now. As a long-term budget and, and trying to guess where our inflation is and where it's gonna be. Cause it's.
I don't think it's gonna come back down. No, it doesn't usually.
It, it has come down. It's still.
Way down, I mean like way down.
Where it was last year. So last year, at this time, we were just, just barely over eight percent. If you look at the general CPI, not the CPIW, it's right around five. So it's technically lower than where it was, but it's still high comparatively. As I spoke with Joe, and it was, last year was kind of. They'd never had a year like that, obviously, as far as the cost of living and inflation. And we didn't even meet the cost of living last year. We were shy of it. We stuck with the number Joe came up with earlier on, which was seven and a half.
I mean, it might come down a little bit, but it's. Well, it's just not going up. Here and say, well, we think it's gonna come down and not.
Right.
Provide it.
I, I almost think the parity study that we haven't done. Is as important as the cost of living adjustments, because we have people who aren't making the wage that they should be making. And so then trying to give them a cost of living adjustment.
Yeah.
On a wage that's below what is average for their job.
Yeah.
I think is, is less of an issue than the, or underpaying them. I think it's better to try and get everyone up to the average of what their job should be. And then work from there. I think it's, it's a better starting point than just trying to shoot from here and trying to keep up with the inflation rates that are going right now. I think the parity study is much more important. And it's part of, I think, our hiring issue. Because whether we give people a two or a seven percent increase next year. If we're still below that average, it's gonna be hard for anybody to, to attract talent and. People willing to come and work.
I agree with that. I just think you'll probably have to look at cost of living still after that as well.
When we have that three percent step increase, which I don't know why we'd call it that or do it that way. Maybe is that, is that standard or normal or the way other cities do it?
The, the structure with how we pay our employees, it has those three percent steps. It's a, it's fairly common. And I think particularly in public safety, they like to, to be able to have a clear identifier. Okay, hey, if I'm here for ten years, where am I gonna be? And so, so that often is helpful, particularly in those positions I, I found. But it's not uncommon to have a step and grade system.
It's common. I mean, we got it at the school and, and the cost of living increases come basically yearly as well. I just, I think you're gonna have to look at all of those things.
I, I, I think so too. I, I see what you're saying, Scott, but my concern is if we don't do a cost of living this year, then our current employees essentially are taking a pay cut. With all the costs around them going up. And, and I don't think that that's fair to our current staff. I think we need to adjust it for sure and do that other study. But I just worry about our current staff. We want to take care of our current employees. I think we are in a good place right now in the city.
I just, not, not to, to go back and forth, but I, I just think without having that study, to, to try and understand the impact that it's gonna have on the general fund. And, and the cost to individual departments is gonna be difficult to quantify until we have that. Because some people could be getting a six to seven dollar an hour raise if we did that study. And then having already built in a two or three percent cost of living increase on top of that. And again, not that anyone doesn't deserve it, but I think before we, before we. Make, before we guarantee funds from the general fund for those wage increases. I think the parity study would be a, a good thing to give us a base of where we're starting from. Because if we don't have that, again, if we do that, it, it could be a huge liability on our, our budget for the year and the general fund and how we're gonna do that.
No, I agree. And what, what I think is, is not to take away from anybody at the top tier position, but when you're throwing a percentage out. The top tier typ- typically benefits from a cost of living, right? Cause they, they're getting a, a higher percentage. Or, or the wages are getting more versus that lower, that low bottom end. And that's why we're having a hard time with retainment or recruitment or, or whatever, is we've gotta be able to. Do that, that, that graph comparison, that, that, that wage. You know, step increases, so to speak, to get them up to where they, they need to be making minimum wage, so to speak. And we've gotta get them there first before we start throwing percentage cost of living. And, and I agree, I, we, we need to give them a cost of living. There's no question about it. I'm, I'm on board with that. But in the same breath, we need to get them to where they're making money and then give them the cost of.
Yeah, we need to do.
For sure. The parity study and cost of living.
Because if you just give them a cost of living, it just. You're, you're not gonna benefit without them. Get them to where they need to be first.
I agree. But I, I really think that cost of living is before us right now. I think we gotta do something right now because those expenses all around them are going crazy.
So is this something that we can't do? We can't adjust?
The tentative budget.
Can't look at the, the graph and the years and adjust that scale, but prior to it?
So I would say with a pa- a parity study, is that maybe what you're asking is, could we do a parity study prior to the budget being approved? Parity studies can be very complicated and you want to make sure that you're doing it. And, and coming up with assumptions of, of what cities are comparable to you. Is it based on population size? Or maybe with Jake and his staff, is it based on the number of meters within the community that we should be looking at? And so I would say that it would be a challenge to do a parity study that we would be comfortable with prior. I mean, we could do a quick one. I mean, Danielle can do a couple of quick phone calls and, and call someone. But to really do a parity study and digest it, it takes quite a bit of time. And so I wouldn't recommend. I think that the time that we have prior to budget and approvals, a parity study would be a real struggle to do. But it's something in the off-season of budget that we could do.
We, yeah, we talked about doing this. And then if I remember right, we said, well, it was not a good time to do it because of inflation. Because everything's going crazy. Let's let things calm down a little bit. And then, and then our parity study might be more accurate. Or, am I remembering this wrong? I think that's kind of what we said. And we just still haven't done one. Things haven't really, I guess they've calmed a little bit, but maybe for a second.
If you looked back about eighteen months ago, particularly with wages, there was, in addition to inflation. There was a lot of changes in occupations and people. I mean, it was a very competitive job market. And so I think that was some of the logic. I'm, I'm going to assume that was some of the logic, because that was what a lot of other communities used as well as. It's a, it's a hyper, hyper competitive time that has slowed. Whereas not maybe as competitive or, or hyper competitive as it was eighteen months ago.
I think we could involve our department heads pretty heavily in the parity study. I mean, instead of putting it all on Danielle and asking her to do it, Jake. Our, our chiefs, you know, all of our department heads are gonna have a better idea who's comparable to us. And then they can come and check that in and say, hey, here's why I chose these six or eight, you know, municipalities in our area. Here's the criteria that I used. And here's what they're paying. And here's how they're paying it. And then if there's questions, you know, I know some people are a little goofy about giving their stuff away. It's a little bit different when it's a city. But Danielle can always call and follow up and say, hey, we're doing a study. We'd like to get these numbers from you if we could. And so I think engaging the department heads on this. Is a good way to.
If we're gonna do the truth and taxation deal, it does give us an extension, a little bit more time. I agree with Scott. I agree that we've got to, I think we gotta do both things. But it would be nice to have a starting point with that, from that parity study. And then go from there as far as. From that parity study and then go from there as far as cost of living.
I just don't wanna set our employees short, right? If 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 we're gonna give them a cost of living, for example, you. You got a guy that's making twelve bucks an hour or whatever it is, right? And you give him a cost of living on his twelve bucks an hour, and then you give him his, you know, he makes fifty cents on his twelve bucks an hour, whatever it is. But then if you go through your parity or you go through re- redesign the graph or the step increases or whatever it is, you know. The county had done that. They they re.
Redesign your stepping ladder system or.
They redesigned it to where, you know, you top out quicker, faster from the bottom, so it helps those tha- that retainment and stuff, so you re. Something to look about. But then you're saying, so then we go through this parity or you reline the graph, and now all of a sudden they're making seventeen bucks now. And then you give them the cost of living. They really benefit from that. That that's the only thing I'm saying. Is I wanna get it right. I don't wanna just throw money at them if it doesn't benefit them. I mean, it's gonna benefit them, right? But I just wanna.
And that.
Six percent at twelve bucks an hour is a lot different than six percent at seventeen bucks an hour.
And that to be part of the parity study is looking at that step in grade system. If i- is there a cap somewhere? I know in the, at the school district, there is a cap where you no longer receive. I think at fifteen years, you you're done receiving that step in grade until you hit twenty-five years, and then you get another, and then you're capped again, kinda. Um, but you should continue to get the cost of living increases.
I would like to see where we're at.
I I mean, we could just look at what some other. Some other people are doing as part of that parity study with the step in grade system as well. And then we just have a starting point, and then we can look at cost of living, cause I think that that won't go away still, um, as a need, especially right now, but.
I agree with, I agree with Chris. We need to, we need to capitalize on the cost of living right now, but I wanna make sure that our employees are getting the benefit. Of doing it right versus doing it later. That's my only concern.
And my thing is, is I think, I think we're all on the same page. It's just timing.
Sure.
When's that study gonna get done? When are we gonna have those numbers? You know, is it two months, six months, eight months, a year? I don't know.
I would start right now.
Yeah, and so, and so my thing is, is timing. If if it's gonna take a substantial amount of time to get that together. I say we talk about a cost of living now, so that we've got something in the works, but if we can get something put together, you know.
Cost of livings are always gonna be there.
Yeah.
Where the cost of living is so high right now, that's where it's concerning, cause next year, say, say we put, you know, parity study out until next year. And then the cost of living is only two and a half percent, right? They're gonna benefit more this year than they would next year. So I just wanna make sure we get that right.
Well, and I think we can set the priority. I think if department heads know that this is a priority to get this parity study done. I don't think it's something that is. I- if one person, if Danielle's in charge of all of it, I I know it can be complex. I've said on our, uh, employee association board. And I understand how complex it can be be for one person to get all that information. But if we have the department heads go out, it it pushes it out a little bit and helps them be engaged. And I think it's, having talked with all of them, I think it's a huge priority for them to get their employees to what's. What's fair for what they're doing, and so I think it's something that would be a priority. And again, if if we can get something close. Uh, and then it's also something that I feel is a lot more fair for the taxpayers. As well, because again, this is, this is tax dollars, and we love our employees. We appreciate all they do, but we wanna treat them fair. And we wanna treat the taxpayers fair. And so when we're talking about doing a tax increase, if we have that parity study, then we can. You know, have some honesty and and. Have some ability for the public to see, hey, this is what is fair and average for a police officer at this level making. This is what our guys are making. There's no discrepancy there. Um, and whether our employees are underpaid paid or not, the public generally doesn't know that unless they have this information. So I think it it's a big priority. I think it has been for a while.
I know it's easier said than done, but I just wanna say this, is that, like, I want Canaveral City to be a place that people wanna come and work. Because those blue collar jobs or police officer jobs or public works, those are the people that are bringing families to our community, you know. And those are the hardworking people. You go up to the ballgames tonight, you see people in, you know, King County work shirts. And Canaveral City work shirts and stuff like that. So I wanna be, I want it somewhere that people can be proud to work. And be a proud, you know, honest day's work for an honest day's pay. Like, I wanna be, it's easier said than done to try to just throw money at everybody. Everybody wants to make more money. But I want somebody that can make a living in Canaveral City, be happy to, be happy to work here and be happy with the pay that they get. And and I just know that those are the, you know, those are the people that are bringing families here and. You know, want a good job, steady income, and I just.
And also.
Hard to get that right.
As taxpayers expect a certain service, oh, that service costs a certain amount of money. I think taxpayers understand that, uh, but the parity study would, like Scott's saying, would help make that transparent and. And easy to see. Uh, Kerry Arm, do you have anything to add on that?
No, I agree. I agree with Scott. I think we need to get parity studied up going.
I think that's kinda the direction that we're giving is let's get that going.
Just maybe some feedback. Uh, in parity studies I've seen in the past where departments do them individually, it creates a lot of inconsistencies between departments. I know that that's maybe what's being suggested, but my recommendation really would be to have consistency, having one person. Go through this process. Because when you'll often find different numbers if if. Let's say Chief Pearson calls, uh, the fire chief, they're gonna give a different number than if Danielle is gonna call the HR representative. And it would be good to have consistency in those numbers, uh, and that's typically I'd recommend going through HR for that. Just for consistency.
Sorry, Danielle.
We didn't do it, Danielle.
So if you're seeing, if you're seeing my face going gray, it's cause I'm like, oh, man, this is a lot of work before. Uh, even before, uh, budgets approved, just because it it takes time to get those numbers. And then go through those numbers and make sure that we feel like they're accurate, uh, and then start doing analysis on, okay, well. Uh, where should everyone be on that range, uh, and make sure that that's consistent? It it takes a, it's it's easier said than done, and so I just wanna. Danielle maybe is also freaking out over here. We're having our small little freak out, uh, cause it is, it's a lot of work to get this parity study done.
Does the league of cities and towns have anything that they do? I I mean, I know, like, I can only speak from my experience in the electric world, but they are, they do yearly. Parity studies that everyone basically submits information to at the beginning of every year, and then they have that information that they release. To all the co-ops, just so that everyone doesn't have to chase us down. Is there any kind of a resource like that?
Some of it could be done. It's it's, the challenges, uh, there's such a variety with, even amongst cities. So if I look at Danielle's position, uh, would be an example. She's doing HR and treasurer. I mean, it's it's a, it, that's a a position that might not exist in many cities. And so it becomes very complicated. There are a few different programs that I've participated in that have maybe more of those, but you do pay for those. It's a. Maybe three grand a year or something like that for like a comp study. Uh, that would be, I think, more up to date and accurate than something available on the league.
I mean, we need to do it across the board, but we, I think we can definitely see departments where where we need the parity study. More than other, some departments need it more than other departments, so I don't, I don't know. Yeah, we gotta do it across the board, but we can kinda target some. Departments a little bit as well, uh.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Just from a personal though, the hard thing is, I think if you target specific departments. It's those department heads as the council, the councilperson is speaking about, that maybe has a little more familiarity. So for example, because I'm part of a professional organization that deals with attorneys. I get the job postings. I see what other cities get. And some of the cities, I think, oh, well, they're paying them that high for a reason. Number one, they they deal with different things, uh, but I also see the ones that are more on par with with Canaveral City. So if you're gonna pick.
No, that's not what I meant. I'm I'm suggesting that as Danielle goes to work on it. She can prioritize certain departments, like, we we have a good, probably have a pretty good idea we're good in some areas. And we can spend more time. Studying or researching other departments in other areas, uh, just to make Danielle's workload easier.
My reason for mentioning it is just that opinions may differ whether we're good in certain departments versus others. That's why I do it across the board.
No, I didn't mean not not do it across the board. That's not, I, that's why I said, I get why we have to do it across the board. I think the direction is though that we have to do it, so let's do it. I know that it'll be some work, but I think we've got to get it done. I think all of us are saying that. So let's get it done.
For that parity study, but it's also important that we. We we need to be competitive as well. We just don't need to be making the same as another municipality. We need to be competitive to the point where people wanna come work for us, wanna be here, wanna bring their families here, wanna be able to afford a house. We, I mean, the parity study may say one thing, but we also need to take that and and try to make it competitive.
Yeah, so it should be motivating to to wanna get it done too, because. So let's, let's get to work on that, and then do we wanna talk about COLA?
Well, I I think, I think, my opinion, I think we definitely need to get going with the study, but I say we throw out a percentage. Potentially tonight, so we can start looking at what that would do for a budget for a, for a COLA.
If you want six percent, it's like a hundred seventy-five about probably is based off what Kylie was saying.
Hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty in the general.
Six point three, I meant.
Yeah, six three.
If you want six three, it's close to one seventy.
That's just the general fund, uh, the utility funds also have some impact, but the general fund monies are more competitive, and so I just wanted to give that number to you tonight.
And we're seeing four and we're seeing five. I I think it'd be beneficial to just look at five and just see what that would do and.
So this is five on top of the three? The three, okay.
Which is kinda typical, you get that step in grade and.
Well, I think we should, I mean, I'm, again, I'm not trying to push back, but I think we should review how that's being done. I mean. If everyone, a lot of places that I have been or visited with, there are criteria for hitting benchmarks, right? You get X qualified, you get X certifier qualified, and then you get a step of this. But every year to get a three percent increase as a step in grade. Just because you stayed at your job on top of a cost of living increase for not having improved at all. I would be much more comfortable giving six percent increase to employees who are willing to go out of their way to better themselves. And better the city and show motivation and give department heads the ability to recognize and reward that behavior. Than just giving three percent steady every year just for staying around.
That could be part of your parity study. You can look at what other people are doing. I think in in the city setting, that's a little harder than like in. At the school district where you have a bunch of teachers doing the same thing. This, you have more diverse jobs and stuff. Like for up, for teachers, it's easy. You get so many, uh, education credits, you move to the next. Uh, part of the ladder, you know, like they've got steps, you step, you go up percentage wise, and then you can shift lanes. They call them lanes. So if you have thirty credits, you shift the lane. If you have sixty credits, you shift the lane or whatever. That's much harder to do here. I I mean, I don't know how you make things. I I, that would be tricky, but I agree, we need something.
Different, cause every department has standard, like, you gotta have a CDL to be able to work there or whatever.
That's.
Maybe even a master operator.
Yeah.
Once you get all the certain, yeah, it's gonna be different, you know.
Well, Brett, do you guys have different steps and qualifications within the fire department?
We got tons of different, and that would be easy. That would be, would probably be one of the easiest departments to make up there.
Yeah.
Well, and I think it's.
Yeah, so it's doable. That one is, might take more time.
Well, and I think it's important though to target it for for things that are important. A lot of times office personnel, because there's not necessarily a structure built around. You know, uh, office staff, there's not the same structure as there is with the fire department, right? There's not the same type of qualifications as there is in public works, but you can easily develop criteria that matter. You know, being qualified and competent in in Microsoft Windows programs is something that people can enroll and take an online class. And and get done and get qualified to to get to a next step, and I think it would be up to those department heads to set that criteria. And say, these are the, these are the benchmarks we need to hit for those increases. I'm, I just feel like that's a better system than just a standard three percent, and then we're given a five percent. Cost of living, so effectively an eight percent increase every year.
It doesn't always have to be a standard three, like, the school's not a standard three percent. Like, we can look at all these things and see what people are doing. It, that one might just take a, I can see that taking a little more time. Um, I think it's something we still should do. I don't know if that one gets done. That, I don't know if that gets done before we do this. I think we can do this before we do that, can't we?
Well, and and maybe we.
And still do that, but.
And set the priority with with staff. I think, you know, Kyler, I think this goes to you very specifically, right? I mean, this is gonna be something that falls in your lap a lot, especially with your background in accounting and and the different areas that you. You came to us very qualified in, right? That. I think this is something that's important to the city long-term towards that, that retention, that recruitment. Uh, and more having people feel like they are getting paired of, paid a fair wage for what they're doing. And feeling invested in the city as an organization. And so I know it falls a lot to you and Danielle. I just think it's. I think it's something that's critically important to, to look at how we've done our pay structure. Cause it's not everything. Pay isn't everything, but it's an important piece of the pie, right? And so I'd like to maybe look at a larger scale change.
So.
If there's consensus.
And all this is kinda beyond the budget, but, but it's related.
But it's tied directly to.
So to to kinda bite off one chunk at a time though, maybe we can do the parity study first. We can talk about COLA. Once we get that parity study, maybe the next thing we look at is our the step in grade system.
Restructuring that.
Yeah, but do it one at a time, so that it's not just so dang much and and we're not rushing it and doing it.
And by the next meeting, we'll be ready to approve it, May twenty-third, I think.
So, but I think the direction's pretty clear on parity study and and getting that going.
Just as a, as a note, I think if, I've heard the number of five percent thrown out, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the general fund. Uh, that already there's no revenue associated with. And so as you continue to to add something like a parity study that will increase, uh, causing that truth and taxation to be more dramatic. Uh, and so I just want to make sure that it's clear that it would require likely a truth and taxation process to go through this. And the, it's it's something that, we're not limited to solving the problem this year alone as well. Um, and so I'm just, I'm very concerned about a parity parity study being reliable. Done in the, in the timeframe, uh, without giving us the chance to really dissect it and make sure that employees are where they are on the time. O- o- on the, on the pay scale. Additionally, I think, uh, what's being proposed is is to add. Incentive for a self-promotion or and and training. And I think that it's something that can likely be done over the next budget year as a priority, and and maybe it could be delayed. Uh, but you're, you're setting the the policies here, I just, I think, from a staff perspective, having a slow and methodical process. Could allow for across departments equity to be felt more clearly. Uh, often when we rush into these things, uh, some departments find that, well, maybe the fire department got a lot more of an increase. We felt like it's, it's not fair, and so I I wanna make sure that if we're doing this, we have a real opportunity to digest it. And make sure that equity is considered across departments, that it's done fairly and not just half hazard.
That's why I suggested worrying about the step in grade later, but I think we can get started at least on the parity study now. Um, probably should have started long, a while ago. I know we were waiting for things to calm down, but let, I think we're good. We can move on from that. We get started on that. Now, now we can focus on the COLA stuff here. Five percent's been thrown out. I think we, we all assumed that whatever it was, we'd have to look at tax, I mean, truth and taxation, the tax increase. There's no other way, other, I mean.
Well, and I think it's not that truth and taxation is not just for the employees, it's the whole city in general.
Yeah.
It's right now, it's the employee that's pushing it, but it's the whole budget in general. That's gotta be addressed.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna go to truth and taxation prior to figuring out the scale and everything else, you know.
The step in grade.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Because then you go to truth and taxation.
And then you could be coming right back before.
Coming right back the next year because you just re- readjusted your skill.
So, so then we've just gotta, I think we still gotta do COLA.
Way to do is to the COLA, but I just feel like we're really sh-. Shortchanging our employees a little bit. The fact of the matter is, is we've gotta pay our, we've gotta be competitive, right? We've gotta be. We're just gonna be a revolving door if we're not. Like, I can only speak to what my profession is, but law enforcement is a constant revolving door. You cannot find cops, right? So you have to be competitive. We're a little bit different here, cause people generally wanna live each year, right? They wanna be here. So they're willing to take less of a pay to be where they wanna live, but again, you can't buy a house here either, so. We've gotta pay our employees better. We've gotta pay our public works better. Like, we've gotta figure that out. I'm willing to, I'm willing to fight for that, I don't know what it all looks like from here, but.
I just, I just think that even if we just do COLA, we still have to go through truth and taxation to be able to hit that.
Is that accurate?
Either way. How, how do we come up with the hundred and fifty grand?
So, you can, now, let me go back here to the general fund.
Unless there's money that we're not seeing in the budget.
Four hundred and nineteen thousand in reserves, uh, in our, in our fund balance. Uh, and it's likely, you can see about, that's including about fifty thousand dollars we're seeing this year coming into reserves. Uh, and so you, you're welcome to spend that reserve fund down. Uh, it's not recommended particularly after we've seen a couple of years of spending it down, uh, to continue to spend it down. Um, there is some one-time funding that likely will go into our general fund to help, help out a little bit this year, uh, whether that's through ARPA. Uh, and so that might help increase that, that general fund balance.
We're still sitting zero right there though.
Correct, and so you, if if you were to increase, it's likely that you would use fund balance to do that.
Who, is that a good? We didn't fix the problem then.
No.
We didn't fix, we didn't fix the problem, we still got a police department that we're.
Correct, I just wanted to remind you all too that we have that debt payment that we're anticipating of about ninety thousand dollars that we also. Needs to go in, not necessarily in this budget year, but it will be a ongoing expense in the following budget year and for ten years afterwards or nine years after that.
So we've, we've just got that problem that hasn't been, when's the last time we did this, it hasn't been, we haven't addressed. This for a lot of years, so now here we are addressing a tax increase.
Mayor, uh, the truth taxation process maybe comes across as a little bit of a, there's some reticence to it, particularly when you haven't done it. Um, there's a lot of municipalities, um, that consistently do it every year, so it's not a shock to the system. And that's if they're just fairly raising it, just so it keeps the public engaged, uh, and knowing that, hey. Costs go up and so must taxes over time, and so we get accustomed more to the truth taxation process. It just makes it hard, you're the elected officials, and so obviously when you're saying costs, it makes it hard when you're the ones who.
And it hasn't been done for seven or eight years or more.
Yeah.
How long has it been?
It's, I don't know if there's, I don't know if we have a record of the last time it was done, it's been done long enough ago that. It's beyond memory of staff and even elected officials that we talked to.
It, it's why our property taxes at the bottom. Um, is because it just, we haven't, we haven't done anything to to increase it for many, many years. That obviously makes it a harder decision for you, but but you also, I'm just proposing one potential option is. Getting accustomed to just doing it every year, and even if it's a municipal amount, because you don't need a huge increase, but you're just evaluating. When you talk about cost of living for employees. Got it, I mean, obviously, the cost goes up for the city generally.
Knowing that that's gonna happen.
Costs go up for the city generally, not just merely the salary, you know, and benefits of employees, and so if you. Um, again, it's it's you, it's you that sets the policy, but it is an option where if you wanted to start setting a new trend, which is what. We haven't been addressing this correctly, if you perceive it that way, and perhaps we need to start the trend of always having truth and taxation more or less. Even if it's just for a small amount to address, address the right of costs, it's been said.
Oh, we gotta do it, I think we gotta do it, this year. I don't see a way around it, I don't, I wish there was, but.
Well, that's what they, we've always said is too, oh, we need to do that, it hasn't done.
Yeah. It sucks to have to make that hard decision, I guess that's kind of our job though, uh, I don't know what else to do, I mean.
Cause nobody wants to do it, that's why it's never gotten done.
I, I think it's way, at least for me personally, I don't feel a huge weight about doing it because I feel like it's necessary and important and it's so obvious to do. But I would just encourage city employees, remember that when we're asking for this, when you're out in the public. Be a good member of the public, be a good member of our community, encourage your departments, encourage all your employees to be engaged because. You know, if they feel like we're just another government, we we have so much government that we pay for. That taxes us heavily, and if they feel like Canab City is that. Then they do get frustrated about the tax and we'll be the focal point for a brief period of time, we'll, we'll catch that real. Heavy push at the beginning, but then you guys will feel it every day. You know, and that's a reality, and so I want you guys to feel good and hold your heads up high about what you're doing. And feel proud and for the community members to respect and appreciate what you guys do as well. And not feel like we're just, that Canab City is just another government, right? Like that's, I I want us to be different, I want people to feel invested and part of it and to know you guys and to come out and shake your hands. And for you guys to feel invested, to take that extra time to to really put into the community, you know, and so. For me, it's, it's an, not a hard decision, I think it's a lot bigger deal for our employees and our department heads and our staff. To not just get clumped in with the rest of bureaucrats and attorneys of the world.
So, do we need to make a hard decision on COLA right now, or?
No, I think, uh, as we approve the tentative budget, uh, you guys have talked about five percent, we could just add five percent. Uh, and have, have myself, I'll put in, well, that COLA and have it for our tentative budget.
Tentatively, are we, are you guys okay with five percent, just tentatively?
Well, I'd like to go with the standard, if it's six point three, I'd like to go with six point three. If I'm going into tr- truth and taxation, I'd go, I would like to go with, be competitive again with what everybody else is getting.
I would be pushing for that when we did the final budget as well, that's what I would be pushing for as well.
If, if mu- it's easier to put it in, I mean.
Now?
If you wanna put six point three in, we put six point three in.
I do, I don't know if we're all.
Where's the six point three coming from?
So that's, that, if we're looking at a range, that's at the top, and then the four is kinda what we're seeing in another spot, and then we're seeing the five. That's where I'm getting to five.
It's like they knew we were getting close to it.
That's the top of the range.
Where I get to five is, the six point three's up at the top, how I view it, and the four's not.
Is six point three up at the top?
There, I mean, I've, I've seen, uh, I think six point three was based on the CPI for western states. Uh, and so there's a few cities that we're using that.
I thought Utah was a little higher than even most western states, and I thought Kean County was a little higher than even most of Utah. Am I wrong about that, what?
It's, it's, it's hard to find specific numbers that are, I mean, so we use, like I said, there's CPIW, there's CPI, there's CPI. I mean, there's all sorts of different matrix, not too many specific to Kean County that that we can really point to.
Okay, but Utah.
Well, I, it's on the high end, it probably is on the high end for anywhere, but again, I'm just lying back on. We need to, we need to take that initial shot and be competitive in our ways and how we take care of our employees, so I, I'd be, I'd be fighting for the high end.
Me too.
You're looking like you're confused.
I just wanna, I I just wanted to say that, I'm understanding, I understand.
If there's a consensus and and it's hard because.
Any other people that come in.
These are always hard, cause it's not a resolution or a, or I mean, we're not having a vote, so.
Yeah, so we are, we're, we will pass a resolution approving the tentative budget, uh, tonight.
There's just so much to it, so I know, we're trying to figure out if we have consensus on that enough to to go with that.
Well, I I'm good with that, we just, we've got that other three coming in right behind us, that'll push us to the nine three.
To me, just that other three is just assumed, I guess, but, yeah.
So I'm, I'm good with that.
I'd rather be at the five, well, on top of the three, that still puts us at eight. That's what I'm thinking. You're thinking that, five?
Yeah, I'm, five is what I threw out to begin with, so, if we're good with five, I I'm fine with five. Cause eight's pretty nice.
We can.
Nine's better.
Nine's better.
Well, like you said, didn't you say start with it if we, by the time we get there, if we're down to five, if we go with six?
I kinda like starting higher.
The, the moment that'll be, I think a really important moment is we do pass, uh, a rate. Uh, prior to June thirtieth, and that's the highest you could go in a truth and taxation, and so that's a real moment. A, a critical moment that we need to make sure that we're paid attention to, the tentative budget can change, so as, as, as you said something tonight. Uh, it's not set in stone.
I'm good with whatever we decide tonight, I really am, but I would like to see, I would like to see you for six point three, and if we need to adjust it more.
For the tentative budget, can we just do a quick straw poll and then move on from this?
You, you can do it, you, you're managing the committee, you can do what you want.
Okay, uh, just a quick six, three, just a quick.
Alright.
Well, I think realistically right now, yeah, I'd say we start there and then, you know, it might be fine, but yeah, I'd say, yeah, six point three.
I'm okay starting there too.
Okay, so there's three, so, Arlen.
Five.
Five, five, so we'll just go, we'll just treat it like that then and keep going?
Yep.
Everybody good with that? Okay, let's, uh, keep on going then.
Let's go to capital projects, um.
Do, hey, sorry, do we need to maybe put, put this parity study on the agenda or can that just be the direction that we gave to you?
We'll go about it as staff.
Okay.
I don't mean to be so negative, uh, like, I mean, I know there's some pushback here, it's just, I'm trying to be realistic with staff time as we're moving forward.
I know you don't wanna rush it, but it's just time to do it, and so I think we, let's just at least get started.
Yeah, I think, I think as staff, we understand that direction, Danielle and I will have a meeting and talk about, uh, putting a plan together for that.
And the reality is, is some of those results could also impact our rate schedule for some of our enterprise funds, right? Because like not all of our wage increases need to come out of the general fund. Some of them can go to the enterprise fund, like a lot of Jake's guys could be tied to a rate. Study as well that Jake could work on and be having that rate study and then say, hey, here's where we're behind on our rates, or here's where we're. We could increase our rates slightly, uh, and help paper some of that, instead of it just being a taxing, it all could also come out of a rate increase. But we have to know what that number is before.
Yeah, it's, it'll be hard work, but it's gonna be great when it's done, uh.
Sorry, I keep going on.
Alright, I started it, uh, where are we now?
Yeah, we are talking about capital projects, uh, one of the things that I've done. Uh, there was a pool lining project of about three hundred thousand dollars, uh, in the recreation fund. Uh, there weren't revenues to back that, and so what I've done is shifted that and we'll have to get it approved through you all. But shifted that into this capital projects fund, uh, to allow for the rec fund not to be drained. Cause it's either taking money from the rec, from the capital projects fund or just putting it in here as the expenditure, and so I'm recommending just moving that. Pool project over here. Uh, we have some, uh, funding for the police department project this year as well that we're proposing. Uh, and then our, uh, impact fee plan that we approved tonight, I put here for this upcoming budget year.
And with the rentals part, we've talked about phases, uh. Can we not, if we're gonna do truth and taxation, can we not look at? We've talked about just getting some grass, um. In the first phase to have some more filled space or lawn space there.
So rather than truth and taxation, I think that it may be, uh, an option for us to look at the impact fees and.
Already eligible.
And it's, it's eligible there and so.
Put in the, cause right now it's at zero, in the past it was at ninety-three, a hundred.
Yeah, so and we can always do a budget amendment as we, as we.
As we get closer to that.
As we get closer to that, uh, the council's welcome to to change that budget as is needed throughout the year, and so. As we get some better estimates and it's more comfortable with that project, yeah. We, we can, we can paper that out of impact fee funds.
Okay, alright, let's keep going.
Uh, this is just a, a fund that's paying our debts, uh, like I said, we have increased the transfers. The swimming pool was not quite covering its costs, and so we're increasing that transfer from rec to ninety-three. And there's a slight increase in transfers from the general fund, uh, to offset the costs for. Uh, the debts that are incurred in the general fund. Come over here to wildland, uh, we're anticipating about cutting, cutting even this year in our wildland fund. Uh, this is a fund that helps pay for our type three truck, uh, that's that forty-five thousand dollar expenditure. Uh, Brett's worked and he has a few projects that they're gonna be working on earlier this year, uh, to help get someone here in our wildland. Uh, and hopefully to improve some of the, and increase our revenues. Uh, but like I said, you can see that we're pretty close to cutting even. Uh, right now, we're maybe three thousand dollars in the hole and we're anticipating to stay roughly there.
Good.
Recreation, uh, we are slightly increasing that property tax contribution. Uh, to two hundred and fifty, so that's about twenty thousand dollar increase. Uh, if you go through truth and taxation process, you, you're more than welcome to allocate more money as well. Uh, the RAP tax, we're seeing that coming in about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, that's going to help fund some of our rec programming and and equipment.
On this one a little bit?
Yeah, sorry.
Alright.
Uh, so you're seeing, uh, and part of the, the revenues here are also because we're funding, uh, outdoor recreation project, that's the trailhead at the. Uh, at, right next to our public works, the Sherrville Trail, uh, that we're anticipating some, some revenues coming in as well this next year, that's funded.
No football revenue.
Probably all goes to the league.
We, um, and I don't know if you've come across this, but some of the GL line titles are not always correct.
This happened last year, remember?
Yeah.
And I want people to see that football makes revenue, I want it to be there. So that it's not like we're just, it's an expense alone and not a revenue, I want it to be seen that it brings in.
I think staff actually has, at least I remember from last year, has a little notation on which one of these GLs the football, um, fees comes in to. It's just more of clearly identifying.
Alright. Okay. With another sport?
Which one, do you remember?
Yeah, I would just love it if it was separate, so.
Yeah, we'll do some research to find, find out where that, that revenue is being lumped in.
Alright.
Uh, with pool, we're seeing about revenues close to seventy-four is what we're anticipating or hoping for. Uh, at the pool, uh, just out of transparency, I'll just go to pool expenditures right here. And we anticipate a hundred and eighty-two thousand in pool expenditures, uh, that's offset by that seventy-five in revenues. Uh, in addition, we're paying a ninety-three thousand dollar bond on that. Uh, that's not showing actually the general funds contributing another twenty-six thousand for interest on that bond, uh, that also is pool expenditures.
And then that increase, does that reflect the repairs? Is that?
No, so those repairs are gonna be out of that, that capital budget that we've shifted them, so if you look. Here in the budget, what was approved, you had three hundred and fifty thousand in that capital outlay. What I'm doing is moving it out of recreation, because we don't have the funding in the recreation fund and doing it out of the capital projects budget instead.
How much longer is that bond on that pool?
I, I think we still have another eight to ten years, I think it's, it's still quite a bit of time.
Okay, can we go up to those expenses?
Yeah, here's the recreation expenses, sorry, skipped over that just so we were talking about pool altogether. Um, we did shift as well, uh, one of the things that's not quite shown here. Uh, based on how employees' salaries are coming out right now, is they're all in this full timeline, but we have shifted from full time to part time. On one of our recreation positions, uh, which has some of those savings and employee benefits, um.
What's the fifty-five hundred dollars to yoga?
Yeah, cause we're.
We have a, we have a yoga, we have a yoga program that we do.
Is that the one at the library?
Yeah, at the library, so in individuals pay for yoga passes and then.
Those expenses just, cause it's just at zero right now, we just haven't.
It was not, so the program's new, it was a grant funding that came in kinda midway through last year. That allowed the program to get going, uh, and so that's why it wasn't budgeted for. Uh, but we would be budgeting for it this year to continue that program.
Where it's new, have we found out if it costs fifty-five hundred dollars a year to run it?
I think we're, we're probably cutting pretty even on that one, uh, so I think we're anticipating five thousand in revenues and fifty-five hundred in. In expenses, if I can.
So I'm looking at basketball, uh, sixty-four hundred is what was. So I'm looking at basketball, uh, sixty-four hundred is what was spent, if I'm reading that right, in twenty-twenty-two. And we're, how come we're both in the glass?
Uh, so that's just rev, so these numbers were from the department head, uh, so none of those were changed from the department head's request. Uh, but you can see some of that basketball expense, well, actually, maybe that's, uh, some of that expense from this year that brings us up to sixty-four hundred is what we're projecting, is because of a grant that came in for additional basketballs for the youth.
Oh, and that's what we gave out.
So that increased the expenses, and so that's why we're seeing that.
Able to give those basketballs out, so we might not be able to do that unless it is probably not a recurring grant. That was cool though. Alright, so baseball. I talked about this, I wouldn't mind seeing two or three thousand so that we could handle the baseball expenses, uh, that are gonna recur e- every year, but there's just been some things that we have gone without. Bats is one, um, it's just gonna be an expense all of the time. Um, I, I think it needs two or three thousand more in the budget.
Well, I can speak to that just a little bit, like this from the rec department. You can't expect, ev- everything's more expensive, right? So you can't expect, uh, parents to purchase catcher's gear. I know we bought some this year, but like three, four hundred dollars of catcher's gear for their kid to maybe play a couple innings in catcher's gear. You can't expect parents to, to pay for that. Um, catcher's mitts, for a decent catcher's mitt, you're three hundred bucks, you know? Uh, for a decent bat, i- i- is it, it gets more expensive as you go on, you know? You get drop tens, a twenty-eight ounce drop ten, you're four hundred bucks.
And we're not proposing that we go buy four hundred dollar bats.
Well, we're saying that it's, baseball's expensive and you can't, you know, the, the teams that I coach, you can't, you don't, you don't want the kids to come with the, you know, a twenty inch bat that they're, or, or a twenty, thirty-two inch bat that's not fit for them.
We're using.
Coaches need to, you need to have some variety is what I'm saying. And so we're lacking on that a little bit in our, in our bags, we're lacking a lot of in our bags. Um, I think that I, I missed the meeting, but pitching machines, we struggle with pitching machines.
We're good now, we got them and they're great. No, they're here and they're here, yeah. But that was one thing we need, but like we're using my kids' bat because the other bats aren't really usable. I, I spent like a hundred bucks on balls and we're using my baseballs to practice with, um. I don't know, we're losing all of them, so.
I picked up a whole bunch yesterday.
But, uh, but every, every coach is doing this, um, and it, it just has to be maintained. And when I went in to kinda inventory that, I, I was just surprised, uh, we've just gotta, we've gotta kinda catch up a little there and I, I'm thinking two or three.
I'm just worried about overspending and underproducing a little bit.
So if you added two or three, then it gives you some wiggle room.
I don't know if we can do that, but we definitely need more stuff like that and as you get into the football season, Danielle knows, it's just super sending helmets off and, you know.
And football.
We don't even have a, we don't even have a, a kit for, for the football, like our youth football program to, to replace parts on helmets.
And cause helmets break in the middle of the game all the time and we need, tho- those are, they're just things that we gotta, we've, we gained a lot of ground in football last year, we, we did, we just gotta keep getting a little bit more.
We gained a lot of championships mainly.
Yeah, and, and there's, and there's donations and things like that, pe- you know, uh, Danielle, did you have something to?
I was just gonna say that grant that helped fund the yoga program, I believe it's an annual grant.
Okay.
And you could transfer the money that was used to start the yoga program to football, put in what we're baseball.
Cause I'm looking at.
Or half it, would I?
Or half it, I think we received over four thousand last year with that grant. That is something that you could apply for again and then disperse that money towards the needs of the.
So football's kinda fluctuated, you got fourteen, then sixteen, then seven.
So that's, let me just clarify, uh, so this is the actual, that's the budget number. So you can see the budget was sixteen, they actually used fourteen.
And then they actually.
This is where we are today.
Okay.
Is that seven, almost eight thousand.
Wasn't some of that supplemented, intended to be supplemented through the?
No, so there was no supplement from that economic development mayor fund.
Alright.
So that's, that's where they are based on actual expenses today.
Thirteen, five is o- okay there then.
But you're talking fifteen at baseball?
Yeah, until you gotta send your helmets off.
Yep, well, yep, that's the thing, once you send your helmets off, that's always a.
That's the problem, so yeah, it's great right now.
Send them all at the same time, we can get on a program.
It does.
Yeah, and, and that was a bigger cost than I think it'll normally be. I think JR can help us get on a, just like, cause he has to refurbish his helmets too, he can help us get on a program where we're not sending all of them at the same time, so.
Well, they came back, we gotta look at different menus, they came back terrible this last year.
It was pretty rushed, um, it was kinda last minute.
Um, maybe it might help if we, so we had some money subsiding this heat stroker, uh, anticipating something, but maybe if we just move that to baseball expenses. Uh, that's not changing your budget, but it's just removing that, that heat stroker.
The heat stroker situation is.
We're not necessarily anticipating.
Revenue.
Rev- expenses there either, so.
Expenses, okay. Great, uh.
So Mayor, I, I think it's great and I think we need to up these, but I, I would also like to see some of these programs do fundraisers.
They do.
I mean, with our youth baseball, let's get out and do fundraisers.
They do.
Let's do with our football, I mean.
They do a heck of a lot, like Kate Cornberg and, and his crew, they're all volunteering all of their time and they're going and they did concessions and they put all of that money into go help buy stuff, so there is a lot of that fundraising and there's these coaches that are volunteering and they're not just volunteering their time, they're volunteering their equipment. So that is happening a lot, um. Tons of fundraising and there's donations coming in, um, that supplement all of it.
Well, I mean, more involving the kids. I think a lot of times, you know, we, we do a lot of fundraising and we do a lot of things, but we don't involve the youth that are directly related to the project. Like why not get our youth trying to do fundraisers to try and raise money to go around and sell hats or sell stickers or something, just to knock on people's door and say hi or some X, you know, I know it's hard, but.
Ken, is that how appropriate, I mean, you do it, you see it in the school setting and there's a lot of rules when it comes to fund, if you've coached it, there's a lot of rules on, on how you can fundraise and it gets pretty crazy.
Can we do any fundraising on the city level?
I, I just, I imagine it getting kinda sticky and interesting, um, and.
We're, we're, I don't know if we'll be more challenging to the school.
Yeah, but then you're dealing with high school, more mature kids and, and they do great.
Yeah, and so I'm saying it is an op- it is an option.
In city league baseball and basketball and so I just, the, the reality of it, it might be a little bit harder. I, so, I just don't know how reliable, I mean, sure, but I just don't know how reliable the source that, that's gonna be. Um, and you're gonna place a lot of, you're gonna, you're gonna place a lot of that burden on, on a few. And then, uh, you know, I guess, I don't know if that makes sense. You know what I'm saying there, but that's the only issue I see with that. I see some, I see it kinda getting a little sticky that way. Look, these private teams do a lot of their own fundraisers and stuff, but I imagine those.
But they're separate from all this.
I know, and, and, but I imagine that those, and, and, and what you're gonna do, you're gonna have those guys doing all the work on the fundraisers and they're gonna say, why are we doing this? And we've seen this happen with baseball, we're not gonna do city league baseball, we're gonna go do, and then it diminishes city league baseball and we've just barely recovered it back to where, uh, we've got a lot of participants in city league baseball. And I'm afraid if we, if we do that, then that happens again. Or they say, yeah, this ain't worth it, we're not getting bank for our buck here and they go, you know.
I don't wanna lose the rec, I mean, I know we're kinda full baseball mode, but just watching little team tonight that you've obviously got some standout players, I mean, but man, just how far they've come in a few weeks, it's insane from kids that can't even hit a ball that are yanking and it's awesome to see.
Things are going, things are going good. Okay, well, are we good, we can keep going, you guys got anything else?
Any other questions on, on recreation?
Okay.
Uh, just as a clarification, like I said, we're projecting increasing that and so that'll come in a budget amendment to increase that from eighty to ninety-three and continuing that on. With airport capital, uh, we annually are transferring twenty thousand dollars in, from the general fund to this airport capital. Uh, this hundred and sixty-six is the ALP, which is the airport layout plan that we're anticipating taking place this next year. Uh, that's mostly funded through federal and state grants, so we're paying five percent of that. Uh, impact fees, this is, so you can see those, uh, revenues that have come in so far this year. Uh, almost six hundred thousand, uh, has come in this year, uh, from impact fees. Uh, as we get projects and during a budget amendment, we'll likely allocate, uh, some expenditure authority here. Uh, with the water sewer fund, uh, there's an increase in revenues that we're anticipating with that, uh, community project funding, uh, that we're putting up here, uh. So I don't know if I have anything else on the revenue side. Uh, it's stayed fairly consistent, uh, and then as far as expenditures, the main thing is going to be that, we have, uh, that project as well, that spring project at two million dollars, the difference being that four hundred that we're anticipating to cover. Uh, right here, we're seeing a net change of eight hundred and ten thousand, four hundred thousand of that is that spring project. Uh, and then there is, uh, about three hundred thousand dollars, which is depreciation, which is shown here. Uh, but not necessarily a loss within that fund.
You guys got any questions about that? Okay.
Uh, stormwater, this is a fund that we're seeing the, an increase year over year in that fund balance. Uh, I think Cody's talked about it, uh, the hope is that we're anticipating expenditures through that environmental assessment that's taking place, that we anticipate being done in December of this year. Uh, and so we're seeing about five hundred thousand in revenues. Uh, once that EA's completed, uh, I think we'll see this going to more projects, but there's no salaries or benefits allocated out of the stormwater fund. Uh, those right now are all coming out of that water sewer fund. This last fund is our perpetual care fund, uh, this is, uh, from our cemetery. Uh, for the cemetery expansion, we're anticipating that cost. If we were to contract that cost out, it's about three quarters of a million dollars, uh, and would add about a thousand, a thousand graves, I believe. Uh, just over a thousand graves, uh, and so that's something that we'll continue to assess. Uh, the cost would require us to look at plots and the cost that those are to our residents. Uh, and so we have two hundred and sixty-five and so it's likely the difference would be funded through the general fund, uh, if we were to go through that project or through the capital projects fund.
Okay.
That's all I got for ya.
Budget, the budget's a beast, always, isn't it, yeah.
Poor Hayden couldn't hang in.
But the more of that we do now, the less we do later, I guess, so it's good.
And this is, this is tentative, like I said, this is an opportunity for you all to see the, this is your first opportunity to really go through and see the budget, uh, and we continue to seek input from the community. Uh, and, uh, there'll be future hearings and so what we have, let me go back to our slideshow here, maybe.
These are gonna be pretty fast.
Yeah, so just this resolution, uh, five, five-one-twenty-three R would be a resolution adopting the tentative budget for the fiscal year, uh, between July first and June thirtieth. It's, we set a public hearing of August eighth and then we would then turn around and get a week for staff to make any updates based on what the council's changed on the budget. And so on August fifteenth, which is not a typical city council meeting, we would then approve the budget. Uh, so this is anticipating a truth and taxation. If the council's not wanting to do the truth and taxation, we will need to switch those public hearings to a date in June.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve resolution five dash one dash twenty-three R, resolution adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four with a public hearing, um, scheduled for August eighth, twenty-twenty-three and a budget approval on August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion to second, any questions on that? Uh, this will be a roll call, we'll start down here with Arlen.
Hi.
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 Okay, the motion is passed.
Mayor, I, I move that we move item thirteen to the next item on the agenda.
I agree.
Mine says item fourteen.
Is it?
It's thirteen, I think.
You stuck online, okay, alright. We got a second? Okay, we got a motion to second, any questions on that? All in favor?
Hi.
Alright, the motion is passed and we will move to item number thirteen, which is a discussion and consideration of a resolution declaring opposition to the creation of the proposed Grand Canyon National Monument. He didn't wanna, uh, put the, he didn't wanna try to pronounce the rest.
I don't even know how to pronounce it.
Uh. Not gonna try. I'll let count, I'll let Chris go here.
Um, uh, I'm sure most of the community is aware, uh, these first two rows here, uh, these families, um, including several others in our community of Fredonia, the Arizona Strip and in Kanab, um, use the Arizona Strip, um, for their livelihood or for a portion of their livelihood. Uh, what has been proposed, um, by a senator in Arizona as well as the Grand Canyon Trust and several tribes, including the Kaibab Paiute Tribe here locally, is to have the president, um, sign over a, a national monument. This would include from the Clay Hole Road back to the east to the Kaibab National Forest, from the Paiute Reservation to the Grand Canyon, as well as the Parrishon National Monument. It will also include on the east side of the Kaibab, from the Kaibab National Forest to the Colorado River, including all of House Rock Valley. It will include on the south side of the Grand Canyon, south of the Grand Canyon, in the Kaibab National Forest, in and through Tucson, um, it's one point one million acres is what they've proposed. Um, we're adamantly against that, I am, um, as well as several others. Um, yeah, the, it's just, the, their main goal is uranium, is the claims that we're seeing in the news. There is one newspaper article that did, did say they would not affect grazing, but I've only seen one newspaper article that mentioned grazing, um, it's a big concern. Um, obviously the Arizona Strip, the majority of the people that run livestock or hunt or do any sort of recreation out there live in the state of Utah. Um, eighty to ninety percent is some of the studies I'm seeing, um, so it directly impacts Kanav, Kane County, Washington County. Um, most of the beef, if not all the beef that comes off the Arizona Strip, gets sold in the state of Utah initially through the livestock auction in Cedar City, Salina or Ridgefield, as well as to private buyers throughout the state of Utah. Um, it says sixteen to eighteen million dollar a year industry, um, the cattle ranching operation on the Arizona Strip and it would be detrimental. Um, if they don't, if they don't, um, remove grazing right out of the gate, which they may or may not, um, we're seeing what they're trying to do with the grand staircase right now, they're trying to remove grazing and it's just a step, they're whittling away at it. Um, so as a rancher on the Arizona Strip and as a property owner on the Arizona Strip, I have huge concerns. I think this is a giant land grab, um, and Hayden Ballard, um, he's here with us. He pulled a lot of this. Um, and Hayden Ballard, um, he's here with us, he pulled a lot of this language together for this resolution. Our city attorney, Kent Burgraph, has reviewed it. Um, I think that this is very appropriate, I hope that you guys all had a chance to go through it and look at it. Um, this is a, this is shot in the dark. Um, we all know how this works, the president can declare a monument, Clinton did it, Obama did it. Our hope with this resolution and others like it, King County passed one today, um, giving, uh, Chairman, uh, Commissioner Wade Heaton, um, authority to sign this resolution, it's pretty much word for word. Um, and he, at this point, at nine o'clock, he's probably already signed it. Um, the town of Fredonia was gonna look at it tonight, I don't know, did that take place? Yep. So they've got it, after tonight, we're going to Hildale, Carraus City. We're going to Washington County and the cities in Washington County, um, to push a similar, if not the same, resolution. We're hoping with all these resolutions, we can give a little bit of weight behind it instead of one community or one organization. That's what we're doing, it, it, it may or may not do much, but we've gotta try. We can't have more land locked up in a national monument in and around our community, it's, it's detrimental. Um, any questions from the council?
I got.
Get going, Mayor, it's go time.
I was up, I don't, ah, I get emotional. Uh, God, I was up till three in the morning last night, just pissed about this, and I've been mad about it since I was eight years old. I know that seems weird, but ever st- that's about when they started talking about the grand staircase. Uh, I hope everything that poured through my head as I watched SportsCenter three times in a row last night doesn't come out of my mouth, but, but some things will, so maybe plug your ears, uh. It's just a threat to our culture and our, and we have a rich culture, and it may not be apparent to everybody that, if you're not from rural Utah or the Arizona Strip, which is basically rural Utah, you, you might not get it. You might not be able to tell where someone's from by the way they talk or, or by their last name, you might not get the beauty of the region twenty-round robin, you might not know what it's like to yeah, push push cows out along canyon and, and brand every spring, or, or go find a narrow head with your kids, or sit around the campfire on the sands eating pine nuts and jerky and and find ti- and, and make the plan on where to go kill a big buck. Uh, you, you, you just don't get it, and you, and it's, and we can't expect you to get it, it takes generations, you have to earn it. Um, but it's real, and it's rich, and, and there's traditions there, and some gen- there's people who've been here for generations that maybe they've lost those traditions, I, I guess. I mean, it takes sacrifice to keep the traditions, but we have to keep them, it's, it's a threat to the, the beautiful culture and, and what we have built here. Um, you, you get these stupid people reading these stupid Edward Abbey books, he comes through as a tourist, as a tumbleweed through the vineyard, a comer and goer and not-belonger. Uh, and, and there's people that are naive enough to kinda, and he, and then he asserts himself as an authority on this, and, uh, and he, he can't be, because he doesn't have the love or the, or the respect or the, the deep intimate knowledge that, that is hard-earned. Uh, but they know better than us, than us rednecks and cowboys. It, it's one that, and, and you can't teach them a thing, they already know everything, when they are learned, they think they're wise. And ironically, uh, it's so foolish of them, I, I don't, when I go out to Pineup and sunshine and out on Bull Rush and, or, or out on the grand staircase to Edwin's or or Bessie's, these are places, these people don't, Edward Abbey don't know these places, or out to Pink Cove, or I don't see the Subarus, a Subaru can't get through the sand out on the grand staircase on, on my corner of it. And to be honest, when I get off the reservation, I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't see any members of Native American tribes when I get out there deep. Um, nor on the grand staircase. Uh, I see you guys, I don't see BLM workers very often, very, very rarely do I. Um, I see ranchers, and I see hunters, I see locals, I see the people that truly care about it and, and have that love for it, and, and so, you know, excuse us sometimes if, if we are leery or protective or defensive when, when people come in and are, and are new, and maybe we're exclusive with our traditions, we, we've learned that you gotta be careful where you cast your pearls and stuff, and it, it's just, I'm, I'm pissed, and, and I don't have a lot of hope, um, that this works. Uh, but we, we gotta try, we've seen it, we've seen it over and over again, the, it's, it's so gigantic, and where the mines are, there's mines already, there's protections already. Uh, most people don't know where the mines are, they've done a great job of reclaiming it where they, where they've done it, they don't know that it's even happening out there. And I don't think they plan on mining uranium in half those places. Uh, and, and it's gonna affect watch, it's gonna affect the wildlife on the grant, one neat thing about the strip is there're trick tanks everywhere. I, you'll, go sit, go sit at one one day, you'll see bighorns, you'll see chuckle, you'll see quail, you'll see antelope, you'll see everything come into them. We can't have those really on the granite staircase, they, they fight them, and it's not only detrimental to livestock, but to the wildlife. Um, so it will lose that, if it covers the Kaibab, then it's gonna be harder for me to go cut firewood, and that's how I heat my house, I don't have another way. Um, which is another huge tradition that we have. Uh, I mean, I've only scratched the surface of our, of our traditions that are, that are threatened by this. Uh, so, yeah, I mean, I support this, and, and I'm kinda full of rage that maybe built up since I was a kid. But thanks for let, thanks for letting me get that out of my, it's not even, it's not out of my system, but maybe a little bit. Ah, you guys can talk, I, I could just keep going if you let me, so. You guys got anything else to add to it?
I, I'd like to say something, but I, I appreciate your motion and compassion with this, Mayor. And, uh, just, Chris and I, his great grandpa, my great grandparents, both of them were homesteaders out on the strip and, and they ran cattle here, they were first immigrants to come here. And, you know, it's been part of the family. You know, I personally haven't been out there and run cattle or anything like that, but the generations that have have maintained it, you know, Chris, Chris family have, has, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it is our tradition, it's, it's what we've known. And it's, and it's a great asset to the community and everything like that, and it doesn't, the way it's regulated now is quite restrictive, very restrictive. And there's no reason for anything to be put in a monument, for one thing, and it's, it's like, it is just a land, a land grab.
You know, this fru- it's frustrating, uh, that, I don't know, we're, we're out of touch with wearing our red hats, I'm gonna keep wearing my red hat. Uh, so my three, I saw a picture of my three boys, my wife took, wearing those red hats, and thought of the generations before them, the multiple gen, not just the Johnsons, multiple lines, and the many families just like it, and I don't know, Chris Ledoux has a song about poking fun at a cowboy's hat, I'm gonna keep wearing my red hat. And, and I hope the people that come in and that are new, uh, can respect these traditions and, and get on, get on our side, because we wanna protect what they came here loving. Um, that's the ironic part about it, the, the ranchers wanna protect road use, they wanna protect someone that wants to go pick berries and make jelly out of it up on the forest, they wanna protect hunters. Uh, and they are the key to protecting it, they are the true environmentalists, the, the sincere ones that truly love the land, and you see evidence of it o- over and over again, so. I, we gotta get this done, and, and we gotta keep fighting, and this can't be, we gotta keep fighting.
Yeah, we're, we're going hard, we're giving it hell.
Well, I, I guess, if you guys got anything else, I'll entertain a motion.
Is it 'cause the tires you popped out there, JD, is that why?
And you're not, and you know what? As a tour guide, you're gonna get people saying like, where's the grand staircase, well, we're on it, uh, or sometimes they haven't heard of it, so you'll get that tourism argument, and I just wanna, sorry, I'm, I'm gonna keep going. It, those things are still out there, those things that they wanna see are still out there, but a lot of that, there's just a lot of nuh-uh. On your way out to Tuie, unless you really know where to go, there's just a lot of sagebrush flats, and they'd never know there was on the monument or, or anything like that, so it's just like on the grand staircase, but.
Well, and, and for me, I think with, with me and my neighbors, those rights that we've had for a hundred-plus years, they should mean something, they're real property rights. They're not just the grazing rights that we have on federal land, but they're the water rights that we own separately outright, that are not tied to the grazing, it's the private land, this monument proposal, they're trying to, they're going over the top of private property, 'cause in the state of Arizona, you don't own the minerals, and they wanna tie it up. So they're tying up private land to a national monument, that is un-American by all aspects.
And it's not sincere in, in the environmentalism, it's, it's not sincere.
And so it's just, it's just outright wrong, and we, we can go through the details, I think the resolution that's been drafted and put together outlines it very clearly. It's very, it's very well done, um. Yeah, if you're ready for a motion.
I, I just, I had a lot to say, but I can't follow that, so, but to speak to what Mayor said, and the reason I hate the Arizona Strip is because
You better answer this up.
Is the fact that my dad worked for Kaibab, right, and so he worked summers, summers for Kaibab, and then in the winters, he'd go ranch, uh, twin tanks, and then we would go out with him, so. Wh- why I hated it as a kid is because that meant late nights, early mornings, cabin in the middle of the night, you know, riding all day, riding down those steep washes, clear down the Grand Canyon, and as a kid, I hated it, but as an adult, I, I love it, so it comes full circle, and I'm gonna start away. And, and the other reason I hate it is that every time I've gone out to kill a coyote out there, it always got skunked, and you watch all these people that go out and don't have any problem doing that, and, and I've always been skunked, but it does come back to our traditions, I'm glad that we're doing it, I hope it makes a difference. Um, I'm concerned that it's not going to, we need to keep pushing further, but it's like with anything, I know, you know, Kerry's got the same stuff on the sand hills with his dad, is, is the, the experiences that we've gained living in sheep wagons for months on end in the winter time out, out to twin tanks, so I'm, I'm all for it, and, and I echo everything that the man and, and Chris has said.
And we, we got a hell of a council for, for this right now, I mean, we are not out of touch, we are extremely in touch with this, so, uh, I'm glad we got, I'm glad we got who we got, we've all got deep, deep experience and love, yeah.
Mayor, I realize that there's no public comment on this.
No, go ahead, I'm gonna allow this much, yeah, yep, yeah.
Mayor and council, my name's Hayden Ballard, you guys know who I am, uh, you know, I, I grew up in Fredonia, I've lived here in Canab. Um, heck, I, I was on the high council here in Canab, you know, I mean, this is, this is just as much as home to me as the Arizona Strip is, and, uh, you know, I, now I live in Cedar City for various reasons, I came over just to, just to listen to you guys, and, uh, you've given me a little bit of hope, you know? Um, you know, in my day job, I work as an attorney for the Public Lands Policy Coordinating Office, I, and I'm just here as a private citizen, I'm not here representing the state, you know, but day in and day out, I, I work with King County, we're in the middle of litigation on the grand staircase, we're in the middle of the R and P process on the staircase, you know, so I get to see firsthand what they try to do to our land, and I call it our, I consider King County home, you know? Uh, just as much as you guys hate the Arizona Strip, I hate King County, not really, you know? Um, so no, I just wanted to say thank you, um, this means a lot, um, because you're absolutely right, they wanna strip away our way of life, and there may be a state line in between our two communities, but in my, you know, the way I see it, and I'm pretty sure, I mean, this is, all of my family right here, they'd agree with me, you know, I mean, heck, my brother married a Canab gal, I mean, this is, you know, it, it's the same community, and, uh.
The Canab gal married your brother, I think, is the way we can say that.
We, we won't dive into that, you know, but truth is, I mean, I, you know, they moved to Oklahoma to run cows, because honestly, it was a lot easier to make a living in Oklahoma than it was here, you know? And my hat's off to them, and I hope they're successful, you know? But truth is, the rest of my family is still here, and if we can preserve what makes our home our home, then I think this goes a long way towards doing it, so I just wanna say thank you to all of you, so.
Thanks, Hayden, thank you guys.
Thank you. Mayor, if you're ready for a motion, I'll, I'll make one. I move to approve resolution five-two-twenty-three R, resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Canab, Utah, declaring the city of Canab, Utah in opposition to the creation of the proposed Grand Canyon National Monument.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, any questions on it? Alright, this'll be a roll call vote, we'll start down here with Arlen.
Hi.
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 Okay, the motion is passed. Wish I could vote on that one.
You can vote if you want.
We, we know where you stand.
Uh, okay, number, we'll move on to
Thanks, Mayor, you guys appreciate it, thanks for coming.
We'll move on to item number ten, a discussion and consideration of the purchase of a compact excavator for public works, and we'll hear from Kyler and Jake on this one.
We can go really quick here, uh, so within our budget, we have the authority to pay for this piece of equipment, it's a compact, a compact excavator or mini-X. Uh, this is under state contract, the purchase amount is ninety-one thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents. Uh, Jake says they have one available on the lot, ready to go. Uh, so, uh, with this approval, uh, we're ready to purchase a piece of equipment.
I can't believe you're getting a deer for that price.
Honestly, yeah.
I, I really can't.
With a five-year warranty, three thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think it's, it's amazing.
You guys got any questions about it?
Just one, is this addition or replacing something new, in addition, okay, and it's a bigger model than your fifty?
Yeah, so currently, the R mini-X we have now is a thirty-five G, they use it for digging graves, cemetery work, headstones. When we need it, they have it, the complex, it's called a problem, our other big excavator takes the semi-truck to haul, so this will help with our smaller projects and stuff.
Perfect, sounds great.
Yeah, very good, very good info.
Do you have a way to, I mean, transport this one as well?
This one's, yeah, it's thirteen thousand pounds, a little run on a tilt-deck pickup.
And you guys have a tilt-deck for it?
Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of a John Deere compact excavator from Honan Equipment Company for ninety-one, two fifteen, eighty-six.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, the motion is passed, we'll go to item number eleven, a discussion and consideration of a resolution, amending Canab City Land Use Ordinance, Chapter Seven, Signs, we'll hear from Janay on this one.
Yeah, so this is just a cleanup of our, um, our ordinances, our sign ordinance. Um, we have some language in there where it talks about political signs that are temporary signs, and we wanna remove the part where it talks about political and elections and just make them all temporary signs. When we're looking at signage, we shouldn't really be looking at the verbiage on the signage, more that it meets the size requirements, the height requirements. And by putting political in our ordinance, makes us look at the sign as if it's an election sign or a political sign. So we just kinda wanna remove, well, we don't kind of want to, we want to remove it. Um, and then when I took it to Planning Commission, they wanted to raise some of the square foot, uh, or some of the size requirements, so for a temporary sign on city property, they wanted to raise that from sixteen square feet to thirty-two square feet. Um, there was a request from the King County Office of Tourism, if you remember the Canab sign that sat out on the triangle for balloons and tunes. Um, that was actually outside of our ordinance, um, they asked us to look at the ordinance and raise that as well. So that's what that temporary block letter sign, uh, language is in there, so we will measure those temporary block letter signs as an individual letter instead of as a sign as, in a whole, um, 'cause it wouldn't meet our requirements for that. Um, there was another area, um, they did, Planning Commission did not wanna change anything with the monument signs, so the King County Water, or, sorry, excuse me, the King County Office of Tourism, um, asked if we would look at the permanent signs, which would be a monument sign in the situation for the Canab sign, as well as the temporary, the Planning Commission chose not to do anything with the monument signs, but to keep this more as a temporary type of sign or use for events. Um, so only section D was changed for that, but if you go up to number four, they did make some changes right there on sizes as well, and this is for temporary signs on private property. They changed it from twenty-four square feet to thirty-two four, square feet. Um, it was a unanimous motion and decision to send to city council with a positive recommendation for the changes within the ordinance.
Alright, you guys got any questions about that? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance five dash two dash twenty-three R. I move to approve ordinance five dash two dash twenty-three, own ordinance amending Canab City Land Use Ordinance, Chapter Seven, Signs.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any questions on that?
Uh, just a comment real quick. I'm glad that those block letter signs are temporary.
Rising ones?
Those big ones. It was just creating a, I would drive by and people would be stopping right there and getting out to go take photos with them. And it's just a, an interesting location. Um, so I'm, I'm perfectly fine with them as long as they're temporary.
This is, uh, I think our motion second still stands. It's a roll call. We'll start here with Scott.
Hi.
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 Okay, motion is passed, and we'll go to item number twelve, a discussion and consideration of a resolution amending Canab City Land Use Ordinance, Chapter Thirteen, Recreational Vehicle Park. We'll hear from Janay again.
So it's another cleanup item. Um, about a year, maybe a year and a half ago, we discussed as Planning Commission and City Council to change some of our parking requirements and not requiring hardscape in certain businesses. RV Parks was one of those businesses that we changed to a road base with gravel, or they had the option to add asphalt or concrete if they wanted to. Um, when we did that, we only changed it for the RV park area. In our ordinance, there's an area for extended stay RV parks, and that was still requiring the asphalt and the concrete. So we just changed, Planning Commission chose to change the verbiage to mirror what it says in the RV park, um, which is what you see on the screen right here. Um, they sent a unanimous motion to make a positive recommendation for City Council to adopt the amendments and the ordinance.
You guys got any questions?
I think it's very appropriate.
There was discussion on that. I remember we were in there when that happened, and it was around the extended stay is going to have a lot different use than the, than a normal RV park. And so requiring the asphalt in those, the hardscape in those areas was built around that fact.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that changes anything.
Yeah, but that was, that wasn't.
That was a consideration is that the, the use in the extended stay part of an RV park would be much different than in a normal park.
Yeah. Well, neither.
Just to speak on that in general, the, the extended stay will have less heavy uh vehicles going in and out than in the RV park. You're gonna have a lot more heavy vehicles going in and out than the extended stay. You're gonna have more of just your standard vehicles. So.
All right, any questions on it? I'll entertain a motion.
Kyler, what's your number? Thank you.
I saw, I saw the man white over there. I was not sure what you were doing. You were, you were emulsing. I was mesmerized. What are you doing?
Time for.
I move to, I move to approve ordinance five dash three dash twenty-three, own ordinance amending uh Canab City Land Use Ordinance, Chapter Thirteen, Recreational Vehicle.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Uh, this is a roll call vote. We'll start down here with Arlen.
Hi.
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 Motion is passed. We'll move to item number fourteen. A discussion and consideration of a resolution authorizing Kane County to use city property adjacent to the Canab Center for Western Legends and Balloons and Toons. And Kyler will tell us more about this.
Kane County was requested by uh the local church on Main Street to move their, they they asked that they would move their Balloons and Toons event and Western Legends event. Uh, that church was, had indicated that they felt like a lot of people were staying at in their parking lot overnight, selling goods, et cetera. And so they've requested that those events get moved. Uh, the alternative that Kane County is proposing includes portions of city property. Uh, so with my mouse, I'll just show that this half of that parking lot, this is City Hall. Uh, you are here. Uh, this half is owned by the city, and they're asking to put uh electric boxes to allow for these white squares to have electric. Uh, and these blue squares would be non-electric. Uh, they would close off a hundred uh with a stage. Uh, for those, both of those events have a stage uh with audience members in this red portion. Uh, and like I said, every one of those white boxes would be a vendor. Uh, we have a resolution authorizing Kane County to use that and to install and maintain those electric boxes. Uh, so they'll be working on this. They don't anticipate if it's approved being ready to uh have Western Legends here this year, uh, but they are hoping for Balloons and Toons to be prepared for that change. Uh, with this, City Hall is still open on the Thursday and Friday of those events. And so we've requested that if, if we give up this parking lot, that they have dedicated space in that back parking lot for our patrons who need to come in.
You guys got any questions about that?
I just have experienced, I understand what, what the, the church's frustration is. I've been there and they used to allow those events to use the church and the bathroom facilities there, and it, it had to be stopped because it was such a problem. So I, I, it's frustrating that it's come to the point where they've asked us to move it.
I think the school was also a little concerned. Now the school's gone, but, gonna be gone, but I, it was pretty close to the school.
Just at one point that I forgot to add in, uh, I did talk with Chief Cram about this. Actually, there's two individuals. I did talk to at least one of the owners of Perry's Lodge. Uh, just so they were informed this would be taking place. That individual didn't express concerns, but they said they'd bring it to their, uh, their group of partners. Uh, I did also talk with Chief Cram about this. There are concerns about parking and what this will do to the neighborhood that is near City Hall and and the Canab Center. And so that's just a point that we brought up in our discussion is that I wanted to make sure it was considered as, as you approve this.
That's true, because when it's on Main Street, everybody parks, clear down Main Street, and then all the side streets. There's not really that right here.
And the church parking.
Yeah, it's all gotta be north, one hundred north.
A lot would probably end up parking in the back. But, but it's still little space.
Yeah, that's as many parking spots as the church.
Feel it real quick.
Uh, so who, who is gonna, so the county's gonna install the electrical, they'll maintain it. Is it gonna be on their meter or our meter?
It'll be on their meter. So right now, they have those electric charge stations that are also on our property, uh, that they pay for the, the meter there.
Good. We can get rid of half a dozen meters uptown that we pay at thirty-five dollar a month, base rate on.
That's a big part.
So are they, are they paying us to put the event on, or is that part of the resolution? We're just allowing them to be?
No, we would just be allowing them. There'd be no contribution between the two parties.
So greedy.
Well, you just think that the impact that it causes on that newly landscaped property right there.
We've, we've historically on county events donated staff time, and 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 so I think the police department's donating an awful lot of time, our parks department is, and so it's just been, and they've helped us on other events too. They've taken over Fourth of July as a, that was a city event that they've now taken over. And so we have this relationship that we've been helping each other out.
I'm not saying that, I'm not trying to cause a relationship. I'm just saying, I'm just wondering. It's all, geez, they'll take me out of context.
Was there any other proposed sites?
Uh, no, this is the site, the recommended site from the county, and so they've just approached us about this, this site. I know that there has been talk with the school moving, of that being a potential site in the future. Uh, but negotiations we need to take place between the school and the, in the, in the county.
Chief Cram, did you have something?
I'd just like to add that I don't know if you're doing a resolution or what you're doing, but if you could add in that it's contingent on the address parking so that we don't have people parking in front of people's residence.
Yeah.
They, they put signage and things, whatever it takes to get, direct people out back and
Yeah.
otherwise, we're gonna be getting called all day long.
I imagine you already probably were.
Yes.
Because they, sometimes they'll park in front of my, like on Fourth of July, they wrapped around, or parked in front of my house.
They just had more parking where it was at, because you had Houston's, you had the, the post office, you had the Heritage House, you had, like, there was just a lot. Church, there's a lot more parking where it was at. So.
I'd just like to see some signage of some sort addressed that so that we don't.
They'll probably still park down in the church parking lot.
Have they, have they said anything like that about closing that whole road off?
They won't be selling stuff and stuff like that when we write to it.
That whole road all the way down to the end of the, this one all the way down, just so the locals, they, they, is, are they planning on them parking that whole street?
Hasn't been discussed for a while.
I just don't know how you're gonna, I don't know how you're gonna do that.
Put it out to go.
Without blocking that whole street off for parking, just so that those local people can get into their homes, so.
It's where they hold most of the van anyways.
Or, or the park.
So just so you're aware, on site here, there's a hundred and sixty-four parking stalls.
Hundred and sixty-four.
On the backside.
On all of the property right there. All of the property for Canab City, Kane County, the back, the side that's over by the Heritage House. There's a hundred and sixty-four.
I don't know. Yeah, I mean, I get why you want it there, because it, it's walkable. Like, you want it, I'd, I'd imagine businesses would want it. Close to them downtown. It, that's kind of where you hope, you know. I don't know.
What else do you do, other than try to put signage and, they're not, they're gonna park in front of the signs, but at least we can do something.
Well, in, in addition, in addition though to the parking spots that Janay is highlighting, um, we do have quite a wide right of way. It goes all the way up one hundred east. There, there's actually, I don't know who put the sign up out here that says there's no parking, because it's private going this way, but that's our right of way. I park there whenever it's full, like during the cushion meeting. Um.
I could tell you who put it there.
Like in front of Ryan's?
I have a hunch, I have a hunch.
Yeah, exactly. I could tell you who put it there. I've never did.
If you're wondering.
But, but I, so when we talk about blocking off the roads or preserve residences, you know, get in, it is the city's right of way, so it, it's.
Well, I mean, as long as they're not blocking those residents.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't be blocking driveways, obviously.
Which they do, though, that's the problem.
City right of way and all, we need to respect where people live. They run into the house of football games and I could never get in my driveway.
What I view as a city right of way is it's not really like the city staff's right of way, it's the citizens' right of way. I don't know. That includes the people that live right there. I don't know.
I also worry about, this does put a lot closer to residents as far as the stage, the noise, the crowds. Where it's currently at, you're not touching residents with all that.
On both sides.
And right here, you're, you're, you're a lot closer to.
Pretty dang loud at my house.
And you're how many blocks away? Now imagine being, being Ryan, being Ryan, but he's moving, but.
Patriot yard foot.
But it's, you know, Patriot foot.
What is that other house, the, the white?
The one below. I don't know. There, it, it's just hard. There's no, I don't see a way around it. It, it's, it's always kind of a nuisance. It's a fun thing, I guess, and a nuisance at the same time. No matter where it is. I don't, I don't know.
Couldn't we block off the church's parking lot much easier than we could do all this?
That's what I was gonna ask.
The church could just put chains up?
I mean, we can't, we can't put it on the church's property, but we could put stuff on our property that could then essentially block the churches and have a conversation with local leadership for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints and block those areas uh, instead of.
I think our preference would be for them to block off their own parking lot rather than us block off their parking lot.
He's just, wow.
But that is an option. The, they're a private landowner who doesn't have to let people park during public events, uh, in their parking lot.
And if, if somebody blocked off their parking lot, it could be much easier to resolve the problem. I think we should be making the county pay for those electric bills anyway on that stuff.
It's pretty similar, though. I mean, you got the Joneses and Trevor Glover right there. I mean, either way, you've got houses right there.
I mean, it's nice having it next to the Canab Center. I mean, that's why we have it there. Like, I like, I mean, I like where they block it off in that corner of the stage, and I think it'd be, but who knows? I guess we'll see, see how it goes.
I'm fine with it. It'll just, yeah, there'll be, it'll be trial and error, and there'll be problems no matter what, just like there are, I mean.
You'll be able to see how it goes before they put in all their outlets and stuff like that. They won't get them in for Western Legends and.
Will they do Western Legends here, though, if they don't have the outlets?
That's what they're, they're saying. They probably won't have that done in time.
So they won't do Western here, though, so they'll put all the infrastructure in first?
I think they'll have to go through it. I'm not sure if they are going to do it. They've talked about potentially having generators. Uh, but I'm not sure if that would, like I said, we're not sure exactly if they're planning on doing it here, this Western Legends, but they know they won't have the electric boxes in.
Okay. I'm sure Ryan will have, uh, states record from this house. Well.
I don't know. I don't know if I like this one as much as, I don't, I mean, if we looked at all the other options. Is there no potential for, like someone said, a golf course, or, I mean, the county facilities, what about out there to the Kaneplex?
Yeah, I don't think that'd be, I think their whole goal is the walkability downtown.
I don't want to take away from businesses that are downtown, the traffic that they get, like, I don't want to take that away. I mean, I would love to have that Kaneplex, but the whole purposes of it is that people can walk to shops, restaurants, and, and around, so.
I think it, it adds. I, I think it would change, it's annoying, yeah. I think it would, I think you'd get less, if you put it out to Kaneplex, I think you'd get would drive less people coming to it eventually, which don't really hurt my feelings, but, but. Mike just had to say. But uh, but I can see why it would be bad for businesses downtown. It'd mess things up. I think it'd mess things up a lot. It'd probably mess the event, the future of the event, possibly. Because it's just not as.
Let's just block off Main Street right there by the hotel and send all the traffic down to Kerry Street.
Well, they already do.
Complete waste for two days.
For two days. No, I'm, I'm just trying to think of other solutions that are maybe less impactful, if there is any. Uh, I mean, I'm not adamantly against, I just.
Well, like, we got, I mean, this is just saying that you could do that, and in the meantime, I guess we could still keep looking at options for the sake of.
The, the hard thing is when they start putting the infrastructure in. Now, this, this resolution does allow you to essentially revoke it at any time. Um, I don't think it would make them move the event. They would just open our parking back up to us if we, if the city did revoke the permission. Because once they put that infrastructure in, I have a hard time thinking they're gonna move it ever.
I mean, there's still residents.
They did just put that infrastructure in, just barely. I guess.
Well, yeah, but the, the investment of punchy holes in our road has compared to putting the electrical in that they're talking about.
Is it gonna be better than?
Just plug into those, can't they just plug into those uh compounds? Some little.
You could make that part of your resolution if you wanted to ensure that it was.
They have to maintain those.
Not block any streets.
Well, it already mentions maintaining the infrastructure, but you could put some stipulations on how it's.
Block that street.
How it's installed.
So what was the reservation like now on the current Main Street with that, the way it is now?
And did your stage?
Because those are, not, no reservation.
It just takes you off. It takes you.
They come in, fill out a special announcement, which says they're going to block off Main Street.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about the whole, they drove, that it sunk.
Even though that's still pretty dang close.
And the counties, the counties indicated to us, so there is a desire to fill those holes in, and so we're getting a bid to have those holes fixed.
On Main?
On Main Street and, and to have those, I think they have some sleeves pulled out, and so Jake's doing that right now. Uh, and they've indicated that they'll be paying for that repair.
But be, but because it's infrastructure going in on public property, um, it, it would be appropriate if you wanted to add a line um, that any infrastructure installed has to be approved by our Public Works Director before an event takes place.
And maintain.
And ma, it already says maintain, but, but the installation is where you may get some concern. Uh, it's the quality of the installation.
Yeah.
And where it's electrical, it might, we, we need to be arcane than our Public Works Director.
But, and the.
Are they doing something please?
I guess, huh?
Oh, we're not, well, so, so I'm not sure. They're, they're, they've not indicated a desire to put the sleeves and the tents up in this front area. I have heard discussion of putting those awnings that have been put on Main Street in the back section of this parking lot.
So we lose more parking.
Not necessarily in the parking area.
Like where I like to park sometimes.
Maybe where, maybe where the mayor likes to park.
And Brett, well, I don't.
In the dirt?
No, just like, are you talking, just right here?
I think back here.
So they've, they've.
Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, they've talked, in, in, actually in the back.
Oh. Well, then why can't we do a whole thing?
Did they not discuss or look at all putting it back there, the event, the entire event back there? If they're gonna be putting booths and stuff back there?
I think they're following a direction from their commissioner to do it, the event at this location.
Which commissioner?
Can, can we follow the direction of the mayor?
It was, yeah, of course. Yeah, of course, of course he don't care, let's go put it up in Alton, and I bet he, he has a lot to say.
It actually would be time saving though.
Yeah, let's do it in Alton, Western Legends.
And the balloons.
And Balloons and Tunes in Alton.
Six feet of snow.
You guys are good with this, I mean, you got Kyler's style?
I mean, it's, it's inconvenient from a standpoint of keeping city hall opened on Thursday and Friday. Uh, but it's, when it comes down to it, it's, we're talking four days a year, uh, so the inconvenience is livable.
And well, until they add another event, right?
Until they add, well, so this is on, the resolution's only for these two events, uh, maybe it gives us free music at city hall too.
So that, that's I guess what I don't get, because you, you'll have the Halloween deal. This kid's got trick or treat out of cars now, you'll have the. The Santa Claus deal, still will be there, these things will still be there.
Yes, this is just.
There's a lot of, what I'm saying is there's a lot of events, not just those.
This is just for the use of that space and the electric outlets, uh, to install those electric outlets, they're only gonna be using them for those.
Your point's well taken though, and that's good, once they put the infrastructure in, they'll find other events for it, but they will need to come back for the city.
I just imagine the, to use the light rays will go there.
No, to use the space.
Halloween will go there, and then the others that I'm forgetting will go there.
Cause, cause this resolution specifically addresses two events, um, but, but.
Oh, they moved Halloween?
But they, but they may come back in the future and say, hey, this works so well for Balloons and Tunes and Western Legends that. Why aren't we doing this event there and this event there also, and they would just need to come seek the council's approval to do so. And after they put the infrastructure in, uh, that may weigh heavy on the other.
Are we just being too difficult about it, maybe we can just.
I don't think we are, I didn't, I would honestly prefer it, I mean, I get them wanting it right front and center. But that just creates problems with traffic, pedestrians, and if it's just in the back here, we have a ton of space back there that they can develop. Have more parking, more room, again, it's still gonna impact some residents. At least there's a hill back there that'll block some of it from some residents, and it's all space that's unused, it's not gonna block anything.
But as it is, it already poses all of those problems, just in a different spot.
It does, but like, where on Main Street where it's at now, there's a stoplight there and there's an opportunity for people to not be out. Now, now, you're gonna have people walking across the street right here, you're gonna have.
At the worst corner.
You're gonna have people out the highway to where they're not even.
Running across the denny, just not even paying attention, running across this.
It's gonna be that canap sign times ten.
I'm glad you caught that, I didn't even, I thought it was dang cool, I thought it was permanent, I was like, this is sweet. I guess I didn't notice all the problems.
Stoplight is a natural, it's a natural.
People start to slow down coming into that, but.
They use it still, they use it too.
Well, and the problem is really like our bigger traffic that's coming through, right, like we neck it down to one lane. We have a lot of large trucks that are coming through that area, locals, I just avoid that entire section during those events, I just go around them. Uh, as I would imagine most locals do, but it's the tourists down there and then the large trucks that don't have another route. And we don't wanna reroute them through our neighborhoods, this is where we wanna keep them.
Western Legends is not, the school's not gonna be there next year.
Well, I'm not talking about the school.
Well, I'm just saying, why wouldn't we not just keep it where it's at, put some cones up in the church parking lot with some signs. We're gonna have to put signs up anyways for parking, put signs up, no parking in the church parking lot, park on school property that'll get sold.
It would've been great if they would've called us and said, hey, what are you guys thinking about this, instead of. Cause I, I just have a lot of concerns with this.
Do we wanna?
I think we need to punt.
Do we wanna punt this one for a second? Cause I got some questions, I got some questions I don't wanna ask right now, yeah.
Commissioner Heen?
He'll text you back.
But I'd like to ask after the meeting and stuff, I think maybe we, all of us might have questions.
I, I think where it's, some of it might've come from is, we got a letter not too long ago from the church and saying that. Be very careful about any, uh, using your church parking lots for anything that, that generates income for other. For, you know, just community groups or anything like that, because the church is being, their tax exempt status. Is being challenged a lot, and they've had to come up with some, they, they have to pay some pretty good bills they've had. In different places where they've allowed people to use, they co-used it, uh, use parking areas for a business. And then the business said, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna build our own parking lot, well, they never do, they keep using the church parking lot and they. And because that's a business and they've been generating income on like that, the church has had to come up with a considerable amount of money to offset. And it's happened all over the country, it's not just one place, so they're, they're making aware of being very careful not to allow anybody to have. A commercial venture there of any kind.
Well, and there's a ton of people down there that, like during Balloons and Tunes, not a ton, there are people down there during Balloons and Tunes and Western Legends. Who are doing things that aren't up to what the church's, uh, expectation for their property is. And it's their property, it's their private property, and so their standards should be the ones that are applied, and there are people who aren't keeping those standards. There's people who are drinking and stuff on church property and, I, I get the church's frustration, if this was my front yard and. Someone was doing things that I don't agree with, I, I'd be frustrated.
We're gonna hear from Ryan.
Well, do we wanna just?
I'm not even gonna go near him for like the entire year.
Well, should we just punt this for a second for, for the next meeting?
Let's talk with him.
What's your, what's your, what's your intuition on that?
Questions or if there were concerns that could be addressed, I think that would help. Uh, that way we're not just punting it and having the same discussion over again, so.
Okay, I think one question is, what about moving it all to the back? That's what, so, I think someone suggested that. And then, some of my other questions.
Can we move it to Alton? That was the other question.
Is that what you texted Wade? You're not gonna hear it for more than four days.
I think, I mean, these are, they're good events, like, even as annoying as they can be, they're good, they're good events.
I just think it's harder to get, for them to get pedestrians back and forth right there without the stoplight too, so it's gonna be tricky.
Just, yeah, that's.
It's gonna be a lot harder with traffic right there and getting people back and forth, cause people are going to that stage. They're coming from iron, from iron horse on that side, and they're gonna try to cross right there and there's no. Like if they have like a designated crosswalk, like you do at the intersection, it's one thing, you know, where they can. Where they had that before, where they had people out stopping traffic and taking them across, you know, that might. I, I know they quit doing that, I think they quit doing that, but.
I like where it is better than the, than this new spot, where it is now, I don't know.
Mayor, um, do you want to inquire, have city staff inquire with the county whether they've actually engaged in discussions with the church?
That's what my mo, my main questions are, is, maybe we talk to the church a little more.
I mean, you've got new church.
Yeah, I did, that's what I was kinda, I didn't know if I wanted, yeah.
If they had some, I think it's at least worthwhile to ask the county, have you engaged in discussions on how to mitigate those first before we.
That'd be the best thing.
It is fun for everybody to be up close to the, like, my, my kids love it and all that, like. It, it does change it if you put it back there, back behind the canap center, for the.
I mean, I like, I like the grass and on both sides right there and everything, but I think for like safety concerns and getting across the road. And have it right there on the, on the road and coming around that corner, people aren't paying attention and everybody knows there's a light coming up. Or, I, I just prefer to keep it where it's at, put some cones up, keep, keep people out of the church.
Okay, good enough, just, uh, we punt with those questions, I guess. Alright, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
I'm gonna get after those county guys, whose name, Commissioner.